Yes, go ahead.
I will hit broadcast. Welcome everybody. Welcome everybody to the Tuesday, August 18th, 2020 Cupertino City Council meeting. Madam City Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Chow. I don't see Councilmember Chow yet.
Keep going.
Councilmember Sinks.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here. Okay, before we do ceremonial matters and presentations, I need to do the report out. Sorry, it didn't come to my city email. I have to find it. Well, I will do the report out later. Heather, if you can send me the closed session report out. It was not sent to my city email. It was sent to my Gmail account. Heather?
I'm sending it right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, we'll continue on and come back to that then. Okay, so the first item now is ceremonial matters and presentations. And it's a proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, granting women the right to vote and commending the League of Women Voters' efforts to fight for voters' rights. So do we have the proclamation?
It's attached to the agenda.
Okay. One second, let me go. I printed out the whole agenda. It is not attached. Kirsten, can you say it to me? It's not attached to my agenda.
You're on mute, Kirsten.
Let me see if I can pull it up and share my screen. Somebody has access to it before I do, feel free to share. I'm looking for the agenda, sorry. I have a lot of presentations stacked up on my desktop if someone else can.
In the meantime, I believe the closed session reports should be with you, Mayor.
It doesn't matter. My network connection is down now, so I can't even see anything.
If you like, I could read the closed session report.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is the report out for the special closed session meeting held on July 29th. Conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, Mayor Scharf and Councilmember Rod Sinks. Unrepresented employees, city manager. Counsel conferred with designated representatives regarding the salary and compensation of the city manager. No reportable action was taken. For the special closed session meeting held on August 12th, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, one potential case. Counsel conferred with legal counsel regarding one potential new case. No reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. So Kirsten, do you have the proclamation yet?
I saw someone just had it up. Someone had just pulled it up. If you could please pull that up again, that would be great. Thank you, Ted.
Okay, I will read this then. Whereas the city of Cupertino wishes to recognize the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution, which states, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." And California was the 18th, whereas California was the 18th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on November 1st, 1919, after thousands of California women advocated for the right to vote throughout the great state. And whereas the fact that women today are active in local, state, and national government and running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all continue following in the footsteps of American suffragists. And the League, and whereas the League of Women Voters was part of the 72-year-long campaign to pass the 19th Amendment and has since continued their efforts to increase voter registration, regardless of race or gender, and break down any barriers in the way of a citizen's right to vote. And whereas, as we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, the city commends the League of Women Voters' efforts to fight for voters' rights. Therefore, I, Mayor Steven Scharf, and the Cupertino City, and the Cupertino City Council do hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment in the city of Cupertino and honor the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment as further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Cupertino to be affixed this Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. Signed, Steven M. Scharf. Thank you. Did we have someone from League of Women Voters wishing to speak as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Roberta Holloman is here.
Welcome, Roberta.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. As a member of the League of Women Voters of Cupertino Sunnyvale, it's an honor to accept this on behalf of all those who have worked to ensure the right to vote. Those who fought the battles over 100 years ago that resulted in the ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote, and those who continue that battle, so all women will have the right to vote. We continue to fight for voting rights and good governments. We, you see how important it is to elect people for office that have the goal of improving things for the community. At this time, it's vital for all those eligible, register to vote. Get informed, take the time to vote, and get their ballot delivered in time to be counted. As we move into the election season, the League of Women Voters of Cupertino Sunnyvale will again be, be presenting candidate forums and pros and cons of ballot measures, so all voters can be informed on these issues. Watch for the announcements of dates for these virtual presentations. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Roberta. Was there anyone else to speak on this, Kirsten?
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Okay, we are on to postponements. Madam City Clerk, do we have any postponements? You're muted. Oh, there you go.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. We do have one postponement. The municipal code amendment to Chapter 10.48 regarding community noise control to consider regulations for leaf blowers has been continued to September 15th.
Okay, thank you. On now to oral communications. This is where people have an opportunity to speak on items not on the agenda. You each get up to three minutes to speak. And it's one, one per person. At the last meeting, I apologize, someone signed in with the name of a person who had already spoken, and I kept lowering that person's hand, not realizing that they were signed in in the same name of someone else, and that person didn't get to speak. So please sign in under your own name, so everyone gets a chance that wants to speak. So this is the time to raise your hand. I am looking at the attendees here. I see three hands raised. The first hand raised is Justin Lee. Welcome, Justin.
Hello, can the city clerk show my attachment?
Did you email it to the city clerk?
Yes, I just did.
Okay.
So I have, it's saying access denied, Justin. And just a reminder, if anyone's sending in anything to the clerk, give me a couple of minutes to pull it up. Don't send it right before you speak, please. So this says I need to request access.
Can you click Request Access?
Yes, I just sent the request.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps?
Why don't we come back to Justin and go on to, next is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Kirsten has something, I hope.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a cut and paste from a press release from the city. And it's related to correcting misinformation that I believe is in response to an article in the Silicon Valley Business Journal where property owners of the Valco site and some other people were giving misinformation. And I just want to confirm if I can, or have you speak to it if you can. I know this is oral, but it would just would be nice to know publicly what this was correcting and if the misinformation has been truly corrected where it should be in public eyes. Because this document was very hidden in, in my way of thinking. I just actually, I accidentally found it. So I'm way grateful, very, very grateful that this was done. It just wish it would get out where it needs to be, so that people who read that article in the Silicon Valley Business Journal know that it was a loaded diaper. Let's put it that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Deb, do you want to speak to, speak to that?
I can do that. So it was pushed out on Patch and the Cupertino Weekly, I think it is. We cannot guarantee which outlets will pick it up. We are working with the Silicon Valley Business Journal to publish our piece in the, in the upcoming issue. But it's definitely up to typically the editors of each publication. So we are working on that, and it's looking positive so far.
No, but can you speak to what she asked? What was the misinformation?
The misinformation was the, the, exactly what was pulled out in what you found, Lisa, which was the schedule of permitting that we outlined in that document. There was some inference to delays, and so we just put in exactly why the delays, because it was, you know, multiple reasons. And there was a fifth submittal as recently as August, which is currently under review.
I'd like to thank the resident who brought this to our attention that I, and then when I asked Deb, she was already on it. And she really quickly correct, correct, clarified it, because that article claims the city has been stalling the permit for two whole years. And so Deb was really quickly trying to clarify.
Okay.
This with her reporter.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and I also emailed the reporter about the error. Now, can we go back to Justin Lee now? Are we ready, Kirsten?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have.
Okay. Okay, Justin, go ahead.
Hello, City Council member. My name is Justin, and I'm a recent graduate of Cupertino High School. I'm a member of Cupertino for All, but I'm here speaking on behalf of Cupertino Association of Youth LGBTQ+ Advocates, an independent youth-run organization in Cupertino. I'm speaking here in response of Mayor Scharf's statement on his Rainbow Yard sign. In this statement, it's brought up that Mayor Scharf had, quote, "strongly supported the Rainbow Crosswalk" and had been working with our city manager and public works director to move this project forward. I don't believe this is to be true. Yes, Mayor Scharf had discussed with others, but he has given up on the idea at the very first obstacle he saw, which was the MUTCD guidelines. Later, he wrote that there is still, quote, "looking into ways to do the Rainbow Crosswalk," end quote. Yet during our last council meeting, Scharf instead had our public works director explain to the public commenters why the city cannot paint the crosswalk. Nowhere they Mayor Scharf nor the director express intentions of looking into ways to work around the MUTCD guidelines. And this was consistent in how Scharf responded on Nextdoor. All of this public, all of this is public, and anyone who's curious can go check the Part 1 of the Cupertino City July 21st meeting recording on YouTube at the 23rd minute mark. Moreover, if Mayor Scharf truly was interested in the Rainbow Crosswalk, how come this project was never brought to the council and this item was never agendized until Kayla pressured the council? Councilmember Lynn, last meeting you expressed that you've never even heard of this Rainbow Crosswalk. Then I think instead of defensively going after me and other young LGBTQ+ advocates for not personally informing you, you should question our mayor. Why did he hid this great opportunity to express solidarity with the LGBTQ+ community that you would have loved to jump in on away from you and the rest of the council if he had known about this for so long? He clearly had seen the petition and already discussed it with many others about it, which he personally admitted to. A close inspection of the law demonstrates that non-retroreflective colored paint on the crosswalk is completely legal, and a review of history of other Rainbow Crosswalks prove there to be low risk of negative consequences. This had, this never had to be a political attack. Yet Mayor Scharf decided to always talk about how he personally strongly supports it without concrete actions and appropriating the rainbow symbol on his yard sign, while demonstrating that he's not willing to put in any real effort to fight for the community. And it is just upsetting for us. I understand that the Rainbow Crosswalk item is still in the queue for the agenda, even if it's not on this meeting. I just want to remind the council that the community is still waiting for you to take actions, and our enthusiasm has yet to die, even if you're forcing us to wait two months for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are on to Jenny. Jenny Wang, welcome. Jenny, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, welcome. Yes, start, you can speak.
Okay, so, dear Mayor and council members, and I'll show you, we live very close to the Vacumore area, and it seems like the homeless sites getting bigger and bigger, and they even take over other parts of the streets too. So I just have some suggestions, thoughts, maybe can, the city can, you know, work with it. Because I know the city has some department, and they are kind of very targeting on the low-income citizens, residents, not really like enforcement department. I think maybe we can have a special committee and including some citizens, like us, want to, you know, make the street clear, you know, and with those department, and put the effort more to use, so not, and maybe some others, I mean, staff that they were targeting in it, some little structure, actually, neighbors, you know, like and concerned, not like the homeless sites like that. Maybe we can put them to some help center for those people as well. So, and I, and so I think this committee would be useful to solve this kind of problem. I know it's kind of put off a little bit because COVID, but it seems like it's, it's growing, it won't be getting worse, we need to somehow prepare earlier if possible. And I, I can do something, my neighbors can do something, and we'll try to help out. And we're free to contact us, so that's just something I'll try to help city out. So I turn meeting back to you, Mayor and council members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Next, we are on to Donna Austin. Welcome, Donna. Donna, you also have to unmute yourself. I cannot completely unmute you.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you go. Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. I just want to briefly mention the fact that, could we relook at our emblem, logo, morion, helmet? It's so incorrect. Now they're knocking down statues all over the country. And this morion is a symbol of a conquistador. De Anza was never a conquistador. That was 200 years before his time. He was an explorer. He made maps. He was friendly to the Indians. He was somebody that was very different. So I would ask you, in the future, maybe we could form a group to come up with a new symbol, emblem. Maybe the high schools could be involved, the college, and come up with something that's more representative of Cupertino. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Deb, do you want to speak to this? Because we have talked about this already.
Yes, we had an item on this year's work program. I'm sorry, this year's, last year's work program. And due to financial constraints or worries, we moved it to next work program, next year. And will reengage at that time, because I think we all know it needs to be changed.
So if any community members, like historical society, would like to take the lead and start the discussion, that might be welcome, right?
Yeah.
I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you.
To support that.
Next, we have Joel. Welcome, Joel.
Can you hear me? This is Joel Wolf.
Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and City Council members. My name is Joel Wolf. I've been a Cupertino resident and homeowner for almost 35 years. I'm both a walker and an avid cyclist, and tonight I join you by Zoom to advocate for pedestrian bicycle infrastructure development in Cupertino and to really thank the council for their past, current, and hopefully future support for pedestrian bicycle projects. I believe the ability to conveniently and safely walk and bicycle truly enhances the quality of life in Cupertino. I personally walk and bike almost everywhere in Cupertino, barely using a car. Last time I put gas in my car was January 8th, 2020, and I still have a half a tank left. Pre-COVID, 90% of my trips to my place of employment in Melo Park were by bike. So I'd like to make the, tonight I'd like to make the following points. You know, I live in a neighborhood where I will personally benefit from the completion of Phase, of the Phase 2 McCollin Bike Way. I believe this is a critical link on the McCollin Road Bike Way project, without which Phase 1 will have diminished value and usefulness. Based on my personal bicycling experience, that portion of McCollin Road covered by Phase 2 is notably busier than that of Phase 1. And I believe a separated bike way on this section of the road is most critical. Importantly, the completed route will provide a safe route to the local schools and civic center library area in which children, teenagers can develop cycling skills and a cycling habit and minimize interaction with automobiles. Pre-COVID, I've heard many complaints regarding traffic congestion in Cupertino. And I think it's important to have viable alternatives to the automobile, and this includes walking and biking. Projects like the Regnar Creek Trail and the McCollin Road Bike Way will help reduce this congestion and associate a pollution, including CO2 emissions. You know, although COVID-19 is not something I would want to experience more than once in a lifetime, there have been a couple of notable benefits, including a substantial reduction in traffic volume and associated pollution. It's much more pleasant to cycle the Cupertino roadways these days. In addition, if the volume of business at bike shops is any indication, there really has been an explosion in interest in bicycling. One shop I know has 1,000 bikes on back order, and it takes six weeks to have your bicycle serviced. I hope some of these trends will carry over post-COVID. The ongoing and hopefully future construction of bicycle, of pedestrian bicycle infrastructure in Cupertino will service some of these new cyclists and prevent, hopefully prevent the return of the pre-COVID traffic volumes. I would like to close by again thanking the council for its strong support for projects like the McCollin Bike Way and the Regnar Creek Trail. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're on to Mooney. Welcome, Mooney. You have three minutes.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Could you, could you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there with the noise in the background. I'm biking somewhere outside. So I just wanted to talk about, you know, the item that Lisa brought up. So I really appreciate, you know, city taking time and putting out clarification on any misinformation that's being, you know, spread around. You know, there are a lot of people with vested interests and lobbyists trying to, you know, you know, come at our city from different angles and, you know, making up lies and whatnot. So I'm glad, you know, city is clarifying it. The one piece that, you know, I would like to see in that information is, you know, to add a link, you know, where the source of the misinformation. Because when I was reading this, you know, on our city website, I felt good, you know, hey, you know, our city is clarifying some misinformation, but I couldn't tell, you know, what misinformation that they are clarifying. Right? So yeah, link to the source of the misinformation would have been highly appreciated. Even if the link is, you know, behind the paywall, I would have asked somebody, you know, to get me the article or whatever. So, by the way, I'm speaking as a resident of Cupertino. I live in Cupertino. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. Next, we have Kitty Moore. Welcome, Kitty.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf. I expect that all of the candidates are welcome and free to use a Rainbow Yard sign, and I am sorry to have witnessed you get attacked yet again. I have an immediate family member who is part of the LGBTQ community, and I am pleased that you are using this symbol. I have brought up a safer and elegant alternative to the Rainbow Crosswalk involving light, which I hope you will consider in your future meetings. Thank you for bringing this issue up to the public, and I am representing myself only. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kitty. Next, we have Byron Ravegno. Did I pronounce your name right? Probably not. Welcome, Byron.
Hear me?
We can.
Welcome, Mayor Scharf and City Council. I am here to report that Walkby Cupertino board member Jennifer Sheeran was selected by the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition's Person of the Year. In their announcement on August 6th, they lauded her work advocating biking and walking infrastructure projects set in part. Jennifer is a key leader who orchestrated a coalition of supporters over the span of a few years in Cupertino to make the Regnar Creek Trail possible. I'm also pleased to report that Walkby Cupertino board member Sina Lindstad and Jen Affisher were invited to present at a panel on outreach and engagement during the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition 2020 Bike Summit on August 6th and 7th. This is the region's largest gathering of active transportation leaders, organizers from government, private sector, nonprofits, and the general public. Their talk was very well received. Joining us in thanking them for their work for the Cupertino bicycle pedestrian infrastructure projects, all better for use in climbing efforts. Thank you for the opportunity, for this information.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are on to Dino Sokas. Welcome, Dino.
Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm also known as Lisa Sokas's husband. I'm a Cupertino resident for 29 years. We live behind the Home Depot on De Anza Avenue. And I'm a retired aerospace engineer, and, and I'm also a 4H B-keeping project leader. And that work takes me to McCollin Ranch up McCollin quite often to work my honeybees and teach class. My kids went to Lincoln, and, and basically, my wife, a while back, when they were young enough to go to Lincoln, tried riding a bike on McCollin, but she stopped after our son had a near miss with a, with a vehicle. So I really, really wanted to thank you guys for all your effort to make the trip up McCollin safer and greener and separating the bike lanes, and it really has, has made a difference in, in our, you know, in our lives. Also, I wanted to let you know that I'm looking forward to the extension of the separated bike lanes up to, up to Torre Avenue, which would get me to the library and whatnot. And this, I am only aspiring to be as good as Joel by getting off of fossil fuel, but I've been trying to use my bike to go everywhere. I have a 50-pound capacity basket. I go to the grocery store, I go to the honeybees, pick up library books, take out food, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so one area that I tend to avoid, I can't always avoid it, is is that section of McClellan between Stelling and Deans. It's basically, it's basically narrow, and cars tend to use the entire roadway. It just, I guess the bottom line is, I can't always avoid it. And I really, really want to thank you for, and look forward to having that be a separated bike lane and enabling a safer and greener Cupertino. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dino. Now we are on to, let's see. Kitty already spoke. Helen Wyatt. Welcome, Helen.
Hello, I'm Helen Wyatt, and I've lived on West Bakers Drive for over 40 years. I've seen this stretch of McClellan that intersects my street go from sort of a sleepy country road to a busy and congested one after it was connected to Pacifica several decades ago. Once cars started using it as a convenient connector road, we started seeing heavy traffic, which made the road hazardous for bikers and walkers. And it became actually very difficult to access the road for residents at certain times of the day. So consequently, I am very happy to see the bike and pedestrian capital improvements going in. And I would like to thank the council and the city for prioritizing bike and pedestrian safety and moving forward on completing the McClellan Bike Lane project. I drive the completest stretch of McClellan Bike Lane project many times a day, as it's my route home. And I've seen that the well-defined lanes for cars and bikes have slowed down the traffic and created a much safer path for bikers. But the work is not yet complete, and the road is still unsafe. And once it is completed, we will have a bike route, and I'm really excited about that, that goes from the west side of Cupertino to the Regnar Trail, all the way to the east side of the city. This will be great for commuters, for students going to school someday, hopefully, and for recreational riders. My hope is that when this project is completed, that the improved bike lanes will get people out of their cars and onto their bikes more frequently. This will greatly relieve the crazy congestion we have on McClellan, particularly when school is in session, and will be a huge benefit for our neighborhood, for the environment, and for the health of our community. So again, thank you, and let's get this done. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mayor?
Excuse me. Next, we have Sudha Kasimsehdi. Welcome, Sudha. Sudha, you need to unmute yourself. I cannot. Okay, there you go. Great. Thank you. We hear you. Yes.
Thank you. So this is Sudha Kasimsehdi, and I'm representing myself. 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the passage of 19th Amendment celebrating women constitutional right to vote. This is a historic moment to celebrate, and I wanted to take this opportunity to applaud every woman who fought for this right and who fought for equal opportunities in every sector of our country. And I hear, I see, I'm very proud to see so many women on this panel today, including our council member Liang Chow, Christine, and Deborah, and Heather Minor. So congratulations to all of you, and I'm very proud to be here. And I also want to applaud every man who supported this, as it's all about collaboration and moving together. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and I wanted to take this opportunity to wish you all the best.
Okay, thank you. Let me see. I don't see any more hands raised for Oral Communications. Let me go up and down here. No, so there's no more hands raised. We can move on to reports by council and staff. Who'd like to go first? Rod?
Do you want the city manager update on COVID?
Well, yeah, but that, on my agenda, that's after, well, yeah. No, actually, yeah, you can go first if you wish, Debbie. Okay, go right ahead.
I just thought it was first, but sorry.
Oh, you're right. Okay, yeah, that's true. Okay, my.
That's okay.
Mistake. Okay.
So it's a little bit lengthy, but I'll go kind of fast. First, a COVID update for overall. Cupertino continues to hold 89 cases. That was the case, the number of cases we had at the last council meeting a month ago. So that's pretty good news. Tomorrow is the next testing opportunity by appointment at the senior center. They've expanded the appointments available to 750, and we currently have 491 people scheduled. So I am encouraging people to sign up for those appointments. The county has also continued its focus on testing and has set up a high-capacity testing site at the Santa Clara County Fairgrounds. It's by appointment and drive-through. They are attempting to do 1,000 appointments per day right now and up to 5,000 per day in the near future. It's open today through Friday from 12:00 to 7:00, so 12:00 noon to 7:00 p.m. And Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. One side of the senior center will be set up for testing, while the other side will be the cooling center that I'm going to mention in a moment to maintain separation. And we also have rotating power outages in the area from 3:00 p.m. this afternoon to 10:00 p.m. tonight for the high-energy usage at this time due to the inclement weather. These notices continue to change every day, so I'll try and keep everyone up to date on that. Regarding the cooling center, due to the national service weather issuing an extreme heat warning for Santa Clara County through August 19th potentially, we started on Friday a cooling center at the senior center. And board is getting out, because Friday, we started with only serving about two people. But Saturday, we went up to 19, and the usage continues to grow. So Saturday, we had actually 19, and then Monday, we had 15. And today, so far, we've had 15. And by the way, pets are welcome. So people are also bringing their pets in. And so we are opening Wednesday, through Wednesday at least, 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon to 8:00 p.m. in the evening for those that need a cooling center. The other thing that's happening is statewide Governor Newsom, Governor Newsom has recently declared a statewide emergency due to the fires and inclement weather or extreme heat. The California Independent Systems Operator has issued a Stage 2 emergency alert for the power infrastructure. And as you may have experienced, there were several Cooper, many Cupertino residents without power for quite some time. That was due to some equipment failure due to, I think, a lightning strike or some near miss. But there won't be, there hasn't been any really rolling brownouts in Santa Clara County thus far. Anyhow, so that's just a little update. Right now, I believe that there's 27 homes without power currently. Also, to remind you, there will be a blood donation on September 15th at Community Hall that will also include antibody testing. And there are 50 spots for that blood draw for folks that are interested. Parks and Recreation, the camps are over. They were, the last one was at 100% capacity, as I reported last time. We are working furiously on programming for the fall, looking at after-school programs to support essential workers and parents. And childcare, for example, for three- to five-year-olds five times a week with all the social distancing requirements. In addition, Cupertino Cares will be giving out 400 back-to-school bags later this week to school-aged children. And then a little law enforcement update. The county is moving towards enforcement of the shelter-in-place order. They had a meeting last Thursday that I attended with Captain Urina and Mayor Scharf. The cities have not received any further guidance since last week's meeting with the county board of supervisors. This will be civil enforcement versus criminal, which then kind of begs the question as to what's the sheriff's role, if any? Typically, the sheriff enforces criminal, the criminal enforcement. So they're still working through that. The sheriff does continue to get calls and complaints regarding people not wearing their face coverings. And they recently got a call for private tennis lessons being conducted at one of our sets of tennis courts. I also want to take this opportunity to provide a little update on the homeless encampments on Wolf. The reminder is that the shelter-in-place, we cannot, as an agency, cause the encampment members to disperse due to the increased health risk of doing so on the encampment members who are a vulnerable population and to the community. So I've written a short summary because it is a point of interest for folks. We have two of them, both located on Wolf Road. We are working with multi-agency effort. Of course, the city of Cupertino, Caltrans, whose property, the encampment close to the 280 South Onramp, is located. Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing, Santa Clara County Sheriff's Department, West Valley Division, and the West Valley Community Services. We're in contact with some other nonprofits who might be able to help with the situation. And we, for right now, continue to provide services to the encamp members, through trash and debris removal, porta-potties and handwashing stations that are serviced twice a week. The county makes visits roughly weekly in the month of July, but I'll call it periodic, checking in, building relationships, and offering services during every visit. The sheriff's department visits approximately daily to check in and maintain good relationships with the encampment members. And West Valley Community Services also does the same. And I believe this is the main food source for many of the encampment members. Recently, I formed an internal, I'll call it a task force of four of us, working in concert with the other agencies to make sure that we're coordinated internally. We were successful in hearing that Caltrans has put the Cupertino encampments on what they call the top 30 in Silicon Valley to be addressed, and that the one on the 280 South Onramp is similar to a situation in San Jose, near a construction situation. And so we're hoping that that one with Caltrans goes to the governor for exception during the shelter-in-place as the one in San Jose is going to. So that's our current hope. I won't go into any more detail on that, but I know that we've gotten, we get inquiries and repeated inquiries kind of over time. And so I thought I'd give an update every once in a while during my COVID update. And that's all I had today.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Now we are on to reports by council. And Rod, you were going to go first with his report on committee assignments.
Thank you very much. Darcy and I attended the Audit Committee meeting on July 28th. We heard how our investments are doing, the conservative ones that are basically cash, and then the ones that are allowed by law because they're longer-term to be more broadly invested. And that seemed quite satisfactory. We also spent some time on interim reports by our independent, new independent auditor. And as for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the board met last week. We had a good and productive meeting. We approved a plan for our future energy resources that has to be formally filed by the state. It's called the Integrated Resource Plan. It's a comprehensive and readable document that will be submitted on September 1st, but it was approved by the board and enumerates the resources and storage that we think are needed to move Silicon Valley forward as part of the total effort by the state to tap into more renewables and buffer power for when it's most needed, which are the early evening hours in general. We updated our strategic plan, had some input on that, and then approved a new budget for the year. Well, it'll be formally approved next month, but we got input to that. We're looking at a budget that will keep our rates under PG&Es again for the next year, as we have for the last three and a half years, and in doing so, add $8.4 million in reserves. Now, this is including, as you may recall, we put $10 million into our COVID relief. We have some plans to do more than, more of that, looking through an equity lens. And the existing programs that we've approved are underway, including plans that the city could use to improve its resilience in the face of power shut-offs. So of our total expenses, 91% is dedicated to power supply. 99% is customer programs and administrative costs. So we got a lot of good work done, and SVC is still on a roll. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rod. John, go ahead.
No committee assignments this week. I did want to say one thing, you know, about the COVID. It's great to hear the city manager said that they're going to have some after-school programs. You know, our kids are now back to school, but distance learning. And so they're really not getting the social interaction that they want and need. So what I'd like to say is, we have a teen center that's essentially closed because the sports center, you know, is closed. So I'd like to suggest that the counselors that we have for the teen center be utilized by the schools for maybe Zoom activity meetings for the students so that they can be interacting. When the classes end, the teachers close the Zoom meeting, and there's no social interaction. So I'd like to at least make that, you know, an option. So I hope there's more support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. How about Liang? Liang, are you there?
Oh, hi. Yeah. So on the 10th of August, we have our Legislative Review Committee meeting. And this is, I think this is the final week of the legislative. And we took some positions, and they are, check the committee webpage for updates. Yeah.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
All right, Darcy.
So on July 28th, we, as Rod mentioned, had our Audit Committee meeting. We are proceeding with our external auditor, Moss Adams. I think they seem to be pretty good. The representatives have been solid when they've been talking to us these last couple of times. We were ready to start back in March, but of course, you know, everything happened. And so it was essentially put on a bit of a hold, but they're starting earnest now. I'm really happy to report that the various targets that our Audit Committee and Finance Department need to meet along the course of the year are on schedule right now. It's been a multi-year process to get to that point. But things seem to be very timely and getting to the point of being extremely well-run on that area of our city. So SVRIA, the Regional Interoperability Authority, as I've mentioned in the past, we're hiring a new executive director because Denise Sellers, who was the former has been the executive director for SVRIA for a while now. There, just to remind everyone, the series of radio towers around South Bay that are used for emergency purposes that we've brought completely online recently. So those are operating nicely. Although there was an issue with our primary vendor Motorola in this last couple of weeks. However, they seem to be responding very quickly to the brief outage due to their equipment. The Subcommittee on Hiring of Our New Executive Director for SVRIA met. Our applications are in, and we should be providing some recommendations to our board relatively briefly. On August 13th, the VTA Policy Advisory Committee met. On August 13th, the VTA Policy Advisory Committee met. I believe that the previous two months have been canceled. Business is proceeding at VTA as we would all expect. I mean, they have a lot of activity in our area, and, you know, it's a very big enterprise. I would say out of the 13 or so agenda items, I point out one, it was an informational item on signal priority, and it was kind of couched in the manner where they were presenting the idea of if you want to have some kind of transit, then we need to prioritize the light signals in order to, in order to, you know, have that be more effective. You know, I didn't really speak up because I felt like there wasn't really that much of a sympathetic ear in the room to it, but I would like to get some input from public, our public, and our fellow council members and staff on the idea of, you know, that kind of inquiry sort of pre-assumes that you're going to need signal prioritization, which in other words means that they're not really looking at a grade separated solution, either going above or below grade, such that you wouldn't need to change the signals. So, you know, if there's any advice as to how to approach that, I'd be very receptive to hearing it as our member of Cupertino, representing the Policy Advisory Committee to VTA. Another item that bears mentioning is that there seems to be a finalization on the consideration of their governance model. If you'll recall, you know, in the last couple of years, there has been some discussion regarding what should we do with VTA? Is it being, is it effective? Is it perhaps an issue with, you know, the way we choose the VTA board? I think trying to be as succinct and politic as I can about it, from what I can glean, I don't think there's going to be really major and structural changes to the governance model. And so, you know, if you do have, you know, very strong opinions about it, I would say this is probably about your last gasp in order to really, you know, get that idea going forward. It seems like it's going along a track where, I don't know, just from what I observed, not much on, from a basic structural level would change. That's my report. Thanks.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
I am unmuting. Great. Okay, so Deb mentioned the meeting we had with the city managers and the police chiefs regarding COVID. That was interesting. I was kind of on the, of the opinion that we really need to do enforcement. Most people in our area are taking this seriously, but there are still incidences. I saw a game on Library Field on Saturday, and I got, had neighbors telling me there's been a lot of soccer games going on, people climbing the fence to get into school fields. So, you know, if we're ever going to actually defeat this thing, we really need to take this seriously. So personally, I'm all in favor of the county doing more enforcement of both social distancing and mask-wearing. We had the Cities Association meeting last week. The big thing was going over a lot of the housing bills. Now, today, these bills were in appropriations. Many people called in to voice their opinion. We've already sent letters from the city, but I called in personally as well. One of the worst bills, AB 1279 by Bloom, that got withdrawn, so that's good. But we don't know what appropriations is going to do yet. I don't believe they decided today, but they could have after I hung up the phone. What they're doing with, there's a couple of really bad bills that we've opposed, SB 1120 and SB 902, both very bad in terms of building more affordable housing. So we'll see what happens with that. Let's see. Councilmember Chow also already talked about Legislative Review Committee.
You mean they are bad because they will discourage it more?
Right, right, right. They discourage affordable housing, discourage affordable housing. Some of them bypass the Environmental Quality Act. These are, a lot of these bills are really designed, you know, to build the most profitable kind of housing for the property owners, which of course, that's what they always want to do is build the most profitable housing, especially in considering the situation we're in now with COVID and the rental prices falling. You know, they've got a lot of concerns about the cost of building the affordable housing. That's part of, you know, our ordinance regarding rental. We require 15%. Other cities have similar or greater percentage requirements. Okay, that's all I have. It's going to be a long meeting, so I think I will stop there. And we can move on to the consent calendar. I do have one, one request from the public to pull item nine. Did anyone else want to pull any items? Or did, Kirsten, did anyone else write in to pull items?
Just the number nine item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so seeing that, can I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar except for item nine?
I move to, just a minute. So where is it?
Leon, were you going to move that?
So I moved to adopt item five, six, seven, eight, and 10, right?
Great, okay. All right, let's have a roll call.
We just need a second, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I thought I heard someone second.
Okay, sorry. Vice Mayor Paul, okay, Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so then let's go to item nine. Award and authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Golden Bay Construction Incorporated for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Bike Lane Improvements Phase One Project. Is there any staff report here?
Mr. Mayor Roger Lee, Director of Public Works, I do not have a presentation, a report to make. This is our Phase One project from Wolf to Finch, and I would be happy to ask any questions that they may have.
Wolf to Finch, okay. Well, we have a couple of public, a couple of people that wish to speak on this, three people now.
This is funded by Apple, right?
This is one of the original funded projects from Apple, yes.
All right, just Wolf to Finch. Okay, that's a very short section. Okay. All right, I have three hands raised on this. First is Kitty Moore. Welcome, Kitty.
Good evening, Mayor Sharp. My only comment is that when I look at item nine compared to item 10, which is another awarding of a contract, they show the plans in item 10. And if, for members of the public that might not recall what this project was, in the future, I'd like to see, you know, similar plan set made available in the agenda in the links so that we know what it's about. I was forwarded an email by one member of the public, which was saying that the, it made it look as though the separated curb wall would be 18 inches high, and that doesn't sound right to me. And I'm wondering if we can expect for this to be similar in dimension from the curb face as the project on McClellan? If you can tell me how wide the actual bike lane is going to be, and then how wide the divider will be? And we'll just leave it at that. And also, will there be the bollards placed on top? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Roger, can you answer any of that?
I'm going to ask David, still the Transportation Manager, to discuss some of those specifics. But I will, I will comment that the segment is from Wolf to Tantow. It includes improvements at Finch, but it is Wolf to Tantow. Michael, do you want to handle this, or is David?
Michael Zuberman, CIP Manager. So we're looking at a physical barrier six inches tall and between 18 and 24 inches wide that fits within the existing bike buffer. So the existing white stripes would remain, and we would just put a concrete curb in that buffer zone. The existing bike lane would remain the same width that it is currently now, and it's just the addition of the, of the bollards, excuse me, the curb. And then we would, we're looking for bollards that are similar to what we put on McClellan Road, but slightly shorter, so as to not provide as significant of a visual barrier.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council, and Jennifer Griffin. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you for the explanation about how high the barrier will be. I'm just going to start out that the Tantow to Wolf section on Stevens Creek Boulevard is highly used. It's at the eastern end of town. I'm a little bit concerned that we're doing a rollout here, which is going to affect eastern traffic more than it will down by the city center, Montevista, et cetera. It was nice of Apple to pay for this, but I wish that they would have used the money to pay for more parkland. I'm happy for the park we got, but believe me, we could get part of a park for this. In October of 2019, my car engine on my Hyundai Sonata died on Highway One due to catastrophic engine failure from machining in the engine, and I was in Highway One and managed to get over to the Rio Del Mar exit. If I had not gotten off the road, I would have been hit by other cars going 65 to 70 miles an hour. I am terrified that we are not going to be able to get vehicles to the side of the road if there is an emergency, if a car stalls, if someone's going to hit you. Yes, six inches will still destroy part of the undercarriage of a car. I don't know why we're doing it that height. I'm really, really concerned that if a car stops or stalls, you're stuck. That means there's blockage on Stevens Creek Boulevard. You can't get emergency vehicles in there. There is already so much demand for traffic load. I don't think this is a good idea. Also, I wrote a letter to you all about this. How do you clean behind this? How do we sweep the debris out of it? We're going to have one section of Stevens Creek Boulevard that is already experiencing massive upheaval, demolition because of Valco, because of other, the IHOP construction down at the Santa Clara end of Cupertino. Why does it always have to be our section of town that gets hit first? Let's not do this right now. I'm also, why are we messing with the signals at Wolf Road and Tantow for these bike lanes? Let's do this down on Deansa Boulevard, or let's do this somewhere else. This is not the time to be messing with signals. We don't know what is going to happen to the development at Valco. Wolf Road right now has tremendous problems. There's going to be a lot of development potentially around it. And then my section of town, we already have dirt and debris. We have a Calvert Camp homeless shelter that's right next to the IHOP construction, which caused a fire last weekend. We don't need any more problems from, let's just do the bike bollards.
Okay, you're out of time, thank you.
Stevens Boulevard, but don't put in on things going to allow me to jam my car if I have to get beside the road. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ken Bell. Welcome, Ken.
Hey, Mayor, how you doing? I wasn't sure whether you were ready for us to address some of the McClellan issues that we have been highlighting here in recent weeks.
This is, we're not on the McClellan issue yet. This is Stevens Creek Boulevard.
Sorry about that. That just showed you how anxious I am to address this in a bit, okay?
All right.
Do you have one comment from an email?
All right, go ahead and read that.
From Larry Dean on behalf of Walk By Cupertino. "Dear Mayor Sharp and Council, just a note to tell you and staff thank you in funding this project. Not only will it be a great start to taming SCB from a bike-ped point of view, but it will also be another opportunity to learn. Each project has its own nuances, but the outcome will be outstanding. Thank you and your staff for your great work." Larry Dean.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council now. So this project's already approved. This is just the construction contract. I'll just say, I'll go first, I'm in favor of this project. You know my feelings that the bike lanes are not supposed to be the place for parking or standing, taking phone calls, giving out traffic tickets, waiting in line to enter a school parking lot, making deliveries, and I'm sorry, Jennifer, or even breakdowns. And, you know, it's too bad the only way to keep vehicles out of the bike lane is a physical barrier. I mean, nothing else seems to work. So, you know, I am in favor of moving forward with this. So who would like to go next, if anyone?
So it's true that I haven't seen the design. So it will be nice if the design will be attached in the future and maybe also photos of the proposed separator of the bike path. That would be nice. And I think I have asked this a few times. Why are we going for the concrete barrier? Because I've seen other bike paths, they are more lower so that even if the bike rides over the barrier, they won't be tripped. And so some lower barrier with the bollards, I think it's just as effective. I think we had a lot of complaint with concrete barrier, and it's a lot more costly to install, a lot more costly if we have to adjust later. Any comments?
Yes, Councilmember Chow, thank you. You know, we've had positive feedback from the physical concrete barriers we've had on the Phase One McClellan project. They do make a, you know, temporary barriers that can just be affixed to the asphalt. They're just not going to be nearly as durable or as much of a deterrent to provide the safety that we feel that is warranted on an arterial street such as Stevens Creek Boulevard or such a busy street as McClellan. So those are the reasons why we are continuing to use it. We did have as a pilot some bollards that were out on Stevens Creek Boulevard that preceded this work being done, just to observe how well those worked. And, but yes, we are, we are recommending the concrete.
Okay. And for the signals, we can always adjust them later, right, as the traffic pattern change?
Well, yes, and these signal modifications that are occurring at Wolf and at Finch, they're to accommodate the lane, the dedicated lane for the bicyclist. And so it just puts in a phasing for the bicyclist to have their own signal as well. But absolutely, the vehicle signals can be phased and programmed as conditions change in the future.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? And I would point out that we've already approved this project. This is just the construct, grant for the construction contract. So John, do you have anything?
Yes, so, yeah, just a couple of comments that, you know, I, as we have previously talked about some of the other bike projects and how much use it'll get, and that we really wanted to see the effort go into the areas where there's going to be more bicycle use and there's, they're dealing with a lot more traffic. And so Stevens Creek is really one of the, one of our areas that I think needs to be addressed first or as soon as possible. So I think this is good. The one question I would have for Roger is since, and I had seen those bollards that have already been up on Stevens Creek there. So did those really work out well, or were any of them damaged? Did they not work well enough, and that's why the added concrete? I mean, if you can kind of tell us how those, you know, kind of played out and, you know, in advance of this.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Willie. Yeah, I think the placement of the bollards was good. It helped people visualize how they were going to be and get feedback from the businesses and, you know, how people are getting egress into the different parking lots there. I mean, some of them were damaged, and I think some more than not, you know, were getting hit. You know, I think you can look at that, you know, the way I look at it is, is, you know, the curbs we put in, they'll get hit as well. There's just going to be a learning curve for people to get used to them being there. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's keeping people out of that bike lane where other things could be getting hit. So.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Rod, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, go. Darcy?
Uh, no, but I'd like to move the staff recommendation on item nine.
A second.
Can I ask one more question? Would the bike lane be painted green still?
Uh, it, it probably won't all be solid green, but, but entry points, exit points, crossing points, uh, that they're typically green.
Oh, but not all, just entry? So I'm just wondering how feasible it is to just paint it rainbow? Because then this will not have less over the problem of the crosswalk, right? And it would look nice.
It, well, it would look nice. I, I would have to, I, I would just have to spend some time in knowing what the regulations were on that.
And now you have a tiny bit more budget for rainbow, right?
Well, the, the bids for this project came in very good.
Yeah, so you have a little, um, extra to maybe accommodate a rainbow, um, paint.
That's, that's not something I can commit to now, but.
Right, yeah, that is an interesting suggestion, especially if the vehicle, the traffic control device code doesn't prohibit it, which they may never have.
Yeah, I don't think they would help we have a regulation for that.
Yeah. Okay, well, the motion's been made and seconded, um, so can we have a roll call vote on item nine?
Sure. Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Sharp, can I have one moment?
Right, is this about the reordering?
No, it will be later.
Okay, go ahead.
There was an item on consent that is worthy of, um, talking about just for a minute. It was our pleasure to bring the recommendation for the design build contract, um, to the council this evening. We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the significant contributions of those who helped make this project a reality. This includes Vice Mayor Paul for his championing, championing and leadership of the project, the library stakeholders, including the Library Commission Chair Amanda Wo, Library Commissioner King Penn, library foundation members Henry Sang, Jim Davis, Karen Barshnaya and Benifer Dust Door representing our school community, the rest of our library commissioners Rahul Visanth, Leana Crabtree and Kristy Wong, the Santa Clara County Library District, County Librarian Jennifer Weeks, Community Librarian Claire Varese, Varese, and former County Librarian Nancy Howe, the KPA group, EHDD architects and city staff. And that's all I'd like to say, cause it's a big win. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, um, we got, that we asked for and it was actually within the budget, so it turned out to be a good process. Thanks, thanks for all the work.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Deb, do you wanna do the reordering now before we start the non-consent items? So, it was requested because the West Fort item is going to be very long, that we move, um, items, let's see, is it fourteen?
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Sixteen and seventeen. That we move fourteen through seventeen before item thirteen. So I'll make, I guess I make a motion that we do that. Is there any, are there any objections? Can we have a vote on this?
Would someone like to second?
I'll second, yeah, let's go.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now we are on to second reading of ordinances, item eleven, the prohibition of parking along McClellan Road between Stelling Road and Deansa Boulevard and along Pacifica Drive between Deansa Boulevard and Torrey Avenue for accommodation of Class Four bike lanes. Is there a staff report, even though it's the second reading?
Well, we have some materials prepared, but I would recommend you go to the public. Ken Bell?
Okay, um, let me see how many people are waiting to speak on this. Ken, you, you are first, welcome. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for having me. Uh, Kirsten, do you have that, uh, presentation that I had sent you earlier that I can go through quickly?
Yes, let me just pull this up.
I'm tagged, I'm tagged, I'm tag teaming with another resident Ram here. So, we don't wanna come across as a bunch of bullies that, uh, wanna discontinue anything with Phase Two. We are looking for some concessions here from, and recommendations from, from council here. Next slide please. So, next slide please. So we're a small segment here in green, so end to end, uh, star to star, we're a very small segment of homes here. So, uh, it's kind of the punchline here, so, you know, we like some of the work we see, we don't like some of it, but, uh, there's some privacy issues and, uh, we wanna address with you on this small segment along the path. So next slide please. So there's about thirteen homes that were affected there in that green piece. So, uh, you know the values of properties today. We think there's some ancillary damage here on side streets, so if we eliminate parking, uh, in that area on McClellan Road completely, then, uh, service providers and friends and so forth are gonna be parking on, on side streets and we're not certain if that's been socialized with that crew. But we have, you know, several twenty-year homeowners here, uh, some names to name a few here. We fit the demographics of, 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 of the area, we're tech, we're retired, uh, we're cyclists, uh, we're, we're all advocates for, for traffic and, and safety control. And we've enjoyed street parking here for many, many, many years. So, uh, again, we, we are proponents for, for cycling. Our ask here is that we have some retention of on-street parking for our convenience for service providers and families and friends. We want a, a proper bike, uh, bicycle lane markings and signage, that doesn't exist today. And we do not, we're not proponents for, for, uh, concrete barriers in, in, in front of our homes, which eliminates on-street parking and invades privacy. Next please. So process to date, it's Phase Two wasn't clearly socialized with us. Many homeowners didn't even understand the scope of it. You guys took a vote on July twenty-first, you had, uh, very few people represented. One city official stated that only two people had complained about this, but more really had been submitted with someone else acknowledged, had acknowledged on the call. You guys did a good roundtable on questions and, you know, recology this and, and so forth, but at the end, you know, we had no, no concession or resolution on street parking and, and, and barriers. You guys did a quick vote, ordered a contract, I think it was, we think it was premature. We contacted Deb, we had a neighborhood meeting on August the eleventh, next. Uh, we had ten of the thirteen homeowners present, and we all voiced concern, and they were great listeners. But in no time did they tell us at that point that barriers were a must-have. They were receptive to, to consider what we had to say, they took, they took the information and, uh, a couple of days later they came back and said the barriers are a must. And they did make one concession and said that, uh, you can remove the street verge between sidewalk and main street from your homes and, uh, and right now that's where street lights and fire hydrants and trees and existing signages today. And that would be a very expensive job here and we, we, we don't wanna lose land in front of our homes, so we, we're not, we don't want the, the street verge removed. So we're looking for council, voted council members to help mediate this, next. So, on, on the top left, that's kind of existing McClellan Road between Deansa and, uh, and, and Stelling, so no signage, no markings, no nothing, right? And then Phase One photo in the center there at the top, right? This is what we're afraid we're gonna see in Phase Two. We got trash cans sitting out in bicycle lanes, we got delivery trucks that are blocking, uh, bicycles in the delivery lane. And then the third photo on the right there, you got a cyclist that's not even in the, the bike lane. He's out riding in the, uh, in the, uh, main, main road because, uh, they don't wanna get landlocked in, 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 inside the lanes. So the bottom part is just really, you know, there's, there's other avenues, there's, there's other choices that, uh, that we could, we could, we could do here. We're kinda, and we kinda like the third one with the star down at the bottom there is that we have some retention, but we give up quite a bit, right? So, and I picked that sign off of Homestead Road. Okay, so that, that's my spill. I'd like to go to my counterpart in the next segment here. His name is Gary, Gary, uh, if you could, uh, unmute him and let him go through his for his three minutes, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, oh, yeah, now I hear you, I don't see your name there, but I hear you, go ahead.
Oh yeah, this is Gary. Hey, can you, can you next slide please? Oh, hi. Uh, so I'm, I'm just coming up a little bit, I've come a little bit late to the game here, but, um, I'd like to kinda capture everyone's thoughts and we did have some discussion with, uh, city manager and like to kinda outline a few things and hopefully, next slide please. Okay, so the goals are, are pretty straightforward, right? We want to ensure bicycle safety, we want, we, uh, we as homeowners wanna preserve our parking requirements, and of course, we wanna promote driver safety, both for us backing out into the road and for, um, uh, driving, uh, drivers coming down McClellan either eastbound or westbound. Uh, we do understand that we, the project needs to meet with, uh, community commitments to a Class Four, right? That's what was promised, uh, for the funding. And, um, and, um, we're trying to do this with a minimal change to a sidewalk and curb layout. And we would hopefully, uh, try to do this with a minor change to a plan. I know that, um, the projects have already been committed and that we have, uh, you know, contractors online to do the work. So, if we can make some minor tweaks to the plan and accommodate the three goals, be greatly appreciated. So the ask for city council is to revisit the parking removal proposal. We would like to have that, you know, modified somehow to, to make the combination, and also for city council to consider alternative plans. Just suggestions from our group is to, you know, to place parking markers next to the new curb, uh, to retain some parking. And if city council wants to be, um, wants to, um, to restrict parking for, you know, whatever reason, maybe, uh, you know, uh, assign us some parking permits or some allowances for service vehicles for those marked spots. So, next slide please. So, uh, so we're talking to city manager and city engineers, this is the current, um, scenario if we were to go ahead and enact the, uh, the divided, um, uh, par, uh, bicycle lanes. Obviously, we, we have a fairly, you know, uh, distributed traffic for bikes and separate traffic for cars, which is, which is the goal. Now, and next slide please. Now, with further discussion with, uh, city management, uh, there were a couple of things that came out of this. And, um, there were basically two prospects, one of which we, one of which, uh, you know, both of which retain parking, right? The allocation of weighages is obviously gonna be a little bit different. And there were essentially two proposals, one of which removes the parkway, which we're never in the favor, we're not in favor of because it adds cost to your project, and basically involves a removal of a lot of property, some of which, uh, involves street signs and light poles and whatnot. But, uh, directing your attention to, to the, um, elements above, it seems like if we divide up the parking, the bike and the, uh, traffic lanes, it seems that we would be able to make the, this fit, uh, within the given confines of the road. If you add up all the totals there, you see, um, the, uh, the ten feet for each of the traffic lanes and then the five plus one point five for the bike lanes and barrier, plus seven feet of parking, you end up at forty feet, which is the width of the road. So we're just asking city council and city management to consider this option so that we could retain our parking and help us, and basically have separated roads for the cyclists and the, uh, traffic. So, uh, thanks again to Deb, David and Roger for private, private suggestion. I think it would be a good solution, uh, if we were able to implement this. Next slide please. Now, um, in, in our community meeting, there was some concerns about the double curb. Uh, I think there was a, a, um, a woman that, that brought up the, the fact that you might be trapping the cyclist i- in, you know, within two curbs, as you can see, you know, with the new curb existing. Um, and I, I think there are probably other options to provide the physical barrier between the road and also the, as cyclists. And if you could go to the, um, next slide please. Sorry, uh, my, my drawing isn't quite as good as the drawings provided by the, uh, the staff. As you can see, you know, we have the present situation on top and the, uh, and then the situation that we can kind of propose that if we were to pour slab, essentially bring the, uh, cycling lanes up to, to street level, uh, to sidewalk level, we'd be able to achieve some of these particular items, uh, without, uh, introducing a second curb. Just to, you know, just kind of like to bring it up there for everyone's discussion. And, but that way, we can retain it, the parking and, uh, but maintain a separate, uh, right of ways for, uh, cyclists versus traffic. And that's basically it, guys, uh, thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Next we have, uh, Mooney, welcome Mooney.
Hello Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Good evening Mayor, thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. Sorry about the noise, I'm on the streets on the bike. With the Class Four bike lane on McClellan, I think, you know, getting into and, you know, getting out of driveway is gonna be, become extremely difficult for the residents living there. By the way, I'm on bike and park commission, I'm speaking as a resident that is impacted by this, uh, Class Four bike lane, not as a bike commissioner, so I'm speaking as a resident. So, what I'm asking city to do is, if we are proceeding with, you know, this bike, Class Four bike lane, I would ask city to work with the residents to ease up, you know, getting in and out of our driveways, which means, you know, approve the harsh shoe, uh, driveway for residents and, you know, and without, you know, any hazards and stuff like that, right? What we don't want to see happen is, you know, residents later on realizing, you know, it's gonna create a dangerous situation, you know, both for the residents backing out of the park, driveway, as well as, you know, the bicyclists that are trying to, you know, go, uh, pass, you know, without realizing, you know, there is a car coming out of the driveway. So, it's better for everyone to get in and out, you know, front facing instead of, you know, backing out. And also, you know, the road is going to become very narrow, so if somebody is backing out, trying to make a, you know, turn into a narrow, you know, lane is gonna be very difficult. So I would highly encourage city to work with residents to mitigate this problem, that dangerous situation that we are creating for residents on that street. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Sharp, you're muted?
Okay, go ahead, um, you have three minutes.
Okay, um, thank you, I just had a quick question on, I believe it was, uh, the speaker before Mooney was showing, um, I just wanna clarify, it looked as though there was an, it was an elevated, um, at the top of curb level, um, platform for the cyclists, so I just wanted to verify that that, that was, uh, where the, the cyclist would be, and then my concern about that is, um, a cyclist, um, coming off this, this six-inch curb, um, and into traffic. So, did I understand that, um, diagram correctly is just my question, thank you.
Okay. Roger, did she understand that correctly?
Uh, that's how I understand the drawing.
Okay, yeah, that's what I saw too.
I think that question is for Gary.
Okay. Gary, do you wanna answer that?
Um, yes, okay, yeah, the, the way it's currently represented, yes. Uh, I, I was under impression that the aspect of separation could be affected if you, if you provide an elevated platform as well. So, yeah, that, that was one suggestion, I'm not saying that the, uh, the city needs to kind of take this up, there could, it's gonna be a safety issue, but that was one solution to get rid of the double curb issue that we would face if you have, you know, both a, a regular curb and this additional, um, you know, bike separation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's see, who is next? Ken, you already talked, right? So, we are going on to, to Ram, welcome, welcome Ram.
Yeah, hi Mayor and, uh, City Council. Can you hear me now?
We hear you, yes, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for giving me the second opportunity to address the city council. So just to add to Gary's point, uh, the, you know, the raised curb doesn't need to just fall off straight away, there could be a small, um, barrier at the end which basically would protect. which basically would protect the bicyclists. So just as Gary said, it is just a suggestion that he made, but it would be nice if the city can consider some elegant solution rather than the ugly double curb, which is one ugly unsightly. And also, if you could come up with a thing that is less dangerous for the residents. Now, residents have been living here for many, many years. This is very invasive. And we would like something that's middle ground between both of us. We're not just saying that we don't want to accommodate the bicyclists. We want to. But we also would like to keep parking and also have some amount of design elegance so that it looks nice. People come home. I mean, it's our homes. We pay a lot of money to live there. And so I would appreciate if the city also takes it into consideration. We pay our taxes regularly, and that's why we are here. I mean, our kids grew up here. They want to come back to Cupertino because they like the schools, they like the area. So what I'm trying to say is that please keep these in mind before we go in to implement the design. The other thing is, the concern is that if there is an impaired vehicle on the road, the road is completely blocked. That's one of my concerns. The other concern also is that there are four streets that feed off McClellan at that stretch, which is basically Felton, John, Lorna, and Kim. And that's probably another 60 or 70 homes. And their daily lives are affected. So what I'm trying to say is that a decision that a city takes shouldn't affect the daily lives of people, their residents, they live there. And they want to live there. They want to continuously live there. And so I would really, really, really appreciate if the city can work with the residents to show that, two things, right? One is that the city cares for its residents. And number two, that its design is nice and it's about coexistence, finally. So that's why I appreciate if the city could consider and redesign this phase two of the project, especially on this particular stretch. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Oh, thank you. I just want to comment that I'm really impressed with that immediate community pitching in ideas and their comments. And I would urge you, I know that there's something similar coming during discussions about Bollinger, which is going to be maybe even worse. So I just encourage you to remember all that's been said and apply it to the Bollinger possible project.
Okay, you're done? Okay, thank you. Next, Jim Hong.
I will cede my time to Ken Bell.
Didn't, did Ken Bell already speak? I'm not sure.
He did.
Okay. So next, we have Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and city council and staff. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And can you all hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. I seem to have mastered this tablet. Anyway, I just had a few comments. I will say, too, that the Bollinger Road, which is coming up tomorrow, is going to be a Donnybrook. It is massive. It involves the City of San Jose communication. It's going to come down to potentially bike barriers there. That road is very, very narrow. I will tell you right now that we, many times, my husband went to Monovista High School, so when we go up to the cemetery, we come back down McClellan many times. I find the bike barriers on McClellan to be very scary. I know that they're important to protect bicyclists. I have great sympathies for the bicyclists. But I will tell you, and yes, maybe I'm a little bit gun-shy because of that incident on Highway 1. I could have been killed. But I will tell you right now that the bollards, the bike barriers, and I think one of the problems is the design of the bike barriers. How tall are the ones on McClellan, particularly down by the 711? I also find it really confusing because they square off the corners at the intersection. And many times, we have sat there with stacking traffic. You can't turn right onto the road. I think that's above by the 711. I understand that, that you have drivers that get panicky. And I've had an incident where someone drove behind me at Homestead, I mentioned before, up onto the sidewalk. So I think that if we can redesign the bike barriers, why are they 2 feet across? Okay, if somebody drives over them and damages their undercarriage, can they sue the city? I mean, that's the liability issue. I will tell you right now that if I get into an incident on Stevens Creek Boulevard and someone is going to hit me, I will make the decision to drive over that 6-inch barrier. If someone is there, I will not hit them in the bike lane. But that is what you have to do sometimes. Either that or you will just sit and allow someone to run into your car. So I think that we need to look at, why are the bike barriers 6 inches high? Why are they 2 feet across? Is there something better we can do? And yes, my sympathy is with that neighborhood at McClellan. I don't find them very attractive. I think we can do better, protect the bicyclists, make sure that drivers aren't scared or they don't feel hemmed in. What happens if emergency vehicles come down and you've got bikes and cars? I mean, the roads are only so narrow. But the Bollinger Road is going to go explode, I can tell you right now.
Finish up.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Eric Lindskog. Welcome, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and city council members and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Eric Lindskog. I'm a New York resident. I'm also a member of the Bike Bed Commission, although I'm speaking as myself here tonight. So I'm speaking in support of protected bike lanes along the whole stretch of McClellan. I think the answer, I mean, is that so far, you know, a great improvement in terms of feeling safe when you bicycle along that. It seemed to work fine, suddenly from a bicyclist perspective as for cyclists. I understand that the resident along the stretch is considering now that some residents are concerned about their parking. And I can sympathize with that. Normally, when cities do this, they see there's alternative parking available. And in this case, you have a very dense set of side streets with only two houses separation. So it's quite close to alternative parking. So from that perspective, I wouldn't be too concerned. But if, city clerk, can you show the picture I emailed in? Oh, yeah, okay, sure.
Is that your picture or is that a picture from another speaker?
Eric, we lost your audio.
Also, we probably need to take Park Street, put the bike lane on the Park Street. This picture shows the bike lane elevated on the Park Street, i.e. keeping the same level as existing. That probably would reduce construction cost. Maybe want to put a fence to protect the bike lane from the parked cars opening the doors.
Yeah, Eric, we keep losing your audio.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Anyway, I'm saying this is a possible design with the bike lane elevated on the Park Street. Though, of course, it will add cost. But if the city council feels they want to spend extra money to accommodate also the parking, maybe that's something.
All right, thank you, Eric. Let me see if anyone else has their hand up.
And Mr. Mayor, I do have an email to read.
Okay, go ahead.
It's pretty lengthy. You may have to cut me off.
All right, hold on. Let me start the timer. Okay. Reset. All right, go ahead.
Okay, this is from Jennifer Sharon. Dear esteemed Mayor Scharf, city council members and city manager Fang, I write to you today to urge you to go forward with the McClellan Separated Bike Lanes Project in Phase 2. These physically separated lanes are a dramatic improvement to cyclists of all ages, abilities, and levels of comfort with riding near cars. The Deans at West Acres portion is one of the most important links as it is where it feels the least safest to ride on McClellan. Removing street parking along the stretch, which was shown to be little to not used, is part of this needed change. As you know, this project has been in the works for many years now and has had successful construction of Phase 1, including installing the bike lane dividers in front of homes on McClellan. Feedback from Phase 1 was that there were concerns with visibility of the dividers. The staff mitigated those concerns with additional paint and markings which will be carried into Phase 2. I understand that there are fears and concerns about any kind of change. Some of the neighbors are encouraging the council to eliminate the concrete divider for the bike lanes for the 1/4 mile. It has been erroneously stated as only 50 yards between West Acres and Deans. This would defeat the purpose of the project. It is obvious that paint is not as safe as a physical divider. Furthermore, the study on backing out onto McClellan that the city staff provided at the council meeting in July and the positive experience of homeowners in Phase 2 showed that the potential problems with backing out of driveways will very likely never be an issue for homeowners in Phase 2. An option would be to spend another $300,000 to move the bike lane up to the sidewalk level and remove the grassy berm between the street and the curb, which would keep the street parking. This would be as safe as divided bike lanes and would maintain the driveways. I would support this option, but it is more expensive. And the neighbors who are asking to keep the parking do not seem amenable to it. A counterproposal made by these neighbors to shoehorn in bike lanes, parking, and street traffic into our existing street footprint is risky for cyclists due to being doored by parked cars and also for the parked cars as lane widths are so narrow. I have personally ridden many times along McClellan, and the roadway between Deans and West Acres is the most nerve-wracking part. If you know me at all, you know I'm not a fearless spandex road cyclist. These lanes are intended for people of all ages and disabilities and amounts of courage. It's important to get the design right to make riders safe and encourage more cycling without impeding traffic flow. The current design does that. Thank you for your hard work on behalf of our residents and in implementing the city's bicycle transportation plan to make it safer and easier to bike around Cupertino. Best wishes, Jennifer Sharon, Cupertino resident.
Okay, thank you. Roger, you said you wanted to make a statement. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Just to put some things in context and preface the discussion that you'll be having, we had the first reading for this ordinance to eliminate parking on sections of McClellan on July 21st. Council accepted this first reading and also went on to authorize a construction contract to complete the Phase 2 separated bikeway improvements on McClellan from South Stelling Road and Deans Boulevard and on Pacifica Drive between Deans Boulevard and Torrey Avenue. As a result of these actions, a contract has been entered into with the contractor. The design for this project has evolved over several months. We have received input from the Bike and Ped Commission, and we include several lessons learned from the Phase 1 project to the West. We are aware that several residents on one section of McClellan do not want to lose on-street parking, and they may have ideas on how to redesign the project. And their input is important and appreciated. However, please keep in mind that the priority of this project is cycling safety for children. Children's cycling safety is best achieved with a separated bike lane as installed on McClellan from Orange to Stelling. The width of McClellan is fixed. Other than widening the road at great expense, there are no safe options to maintain the priority for this project and keep on-street parking. It is my recommendation that no changes to the design occur, and council continue with the second reading of this ordinance. If council desires to redesign this project, it will be my recommendation to cancel the current contract and redesign as council directs. And going the redesign route will expose the city to compensable damage from the contractor in the tens to hundreds of thousands, along with additional redesign expense, and it will delay the project to at least next spring. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roger. So now we can bring it back to council. Who would like to go first here?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have many comments here. I think that's a good project. And unfortunately, I realize that the neighbors didn't necessarily get mobilized with regard to some of the concerns that are stated here. But I think on the balance of it, you look at the issue of safety. This is a very busy street. And having the separation of the bike lane from that street is something that will indeed improve safety. It is unfortunate that we're removing some of these residential amenities, most particularly the parking. But I think on the balance of it, I maintain my position where I was the last time we visited this when approving the project and under the first reading of the ordinance. You know, I would ask staff to continue to engage with residents to see if there's anything that we can be doing to accommodate within the contours of what we've already approved and within the parameters of having gone forward with the contracts. So, you know, I do appreciate the residential input and sentiment. And I think anything that we can do to help alleviate their concerns. I guess the problem is that when you identify the loss of parking spots along a street as busy as McClellan, it gets a little bit more difficult to know what your alternatives are other than the side streets, of course, along McClellan due north of their neighborhood or their side of the street. So, you know, I feel badly for the neighbors that have these concerns. Hopefully, over time, they'll grow to appreciate the amenity as the safety feature and true amenity that I think the majority of us, if not all of us, believe that it is. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Darcy. Rod, do you want to go?
Sure. I will second Darcy's thoughtful remarks. You know, when we put these lanes out, although the car lanes don't get any narrower if they're staying in their lane, we do find traffic calming. So what we know is that traffic will slow down. It'll make it actually easier for people to get in and out, I think. We know that just this weekend, a biker was killed on our streets. And we know that every time that happens, without real protection, our parents and their kids feel less safe. And so this protection extends now, will extend to make it possible for kids and everybody else who wants that protection to get all the way from the west end of town to the civic center in a protected way. And I think that's a very good thing. And I know, right, for the folks that are losing their parking, that's tough. I appreciate city manager's offer yesterday morning in saying, would you consider this? And I heard speakers say, no, we don't want to take away that strip. You'd have to make sure that you couldn't be, as one of the speakers said, "doored." That was a new verb to me. But I know it happens, right? People open their doors and then at the wrong time and the biker crashes and we have a real disaster. So I think this is the right project to move forward. I think we've been through a good deliberative process. As I understand, we noticed everybody twice before we took prior action. And I'm in support of moving forward tonight.
Okay, thank you, Rod. Leon, would you like to go now?
Yeah. So first, let me understand. How come the residents feel this... So first, let me understand, how come the residents feel this, they were not aware of this? I don't think the council ever deliberated on the design. This was brought to us already designed. And I think the last one was the only one, we were just approving the contract, we were never being consulted on the design or one lane to lane with parking or no parking. So what's the decision process to derive on the current design? And how come the residents, how were they notified? How come they did not come forward before?
Well, I may be able to partially answer that, Councilmember Chow. It's not typical that we would take a design to council. We did take the project to the Bike and Ped Commission. They had their opportunity to have input on it. They were in favor of that and the residents...
This was reviewed and approved by the Bike and Ped Commission, right?
Yeah, they agreed with the recommendation of the project. You know, of course, it's in the Bike and Ped Plan. There were direct mailings to, you know, all the homes that front this section that we're doing and David Stillman, our Transportation...
When was the direct mailing mailed? Was that before the Bike and Ped Commission meeting or after?
There was a notice prior to and one notice after. So the first notice was on June 10th. I believe the Bike and Ped Commission meeting was June 17th. And then there was another notification with a little more bolded message on June 29th.
And...
You have copies of those.
On 17th, okay. So the residents were not aware of this. So I wonder where is the communication breakdown? Thank you, thank you for the staff for meeting with them and even coming up with alternative designs. So it looks like the drawings with parking came from the staff. Is that a feasible implementation to consider one side with parking?
Yes, but the...
It was wide enough?
It's very costly given the redesign and the neighbors do not want to lose the park strip, which is where the, they were talking about the lawn and the trees and the lighting that Gary talked about. The park strip is not something they want to take in order to provide the width needed for the bike lane and then secured parking and then the lane of traffic. And it's pretty expensive, I have to say.
And then the one sketch that whether it was Ken or Gary had up with the cloud on the top that showed everything fitting within the 40-foot footprint we have now, that is not, you know, staff's recommendation to proceed with that. It narrows down the parking lane to seven feet, which is, you know, very, you know, should be at least eight feet. And the bike lane is also narrower and the physical curb that separates the parking lane from the bike lane is very narrow. And as councilman sinks, you know, you could use that, the verb "doored" would happen in that current alignment. It would be better to not make any improvements out there at all than to do that.
Okay. I looked up some pictures. Actually, there are ways to do a race the bike path. Actually, one of the Bike and Ped Commissioner brought up that he proposed for Stevens Creek and the rest of Stevens Creek from maybe Wolf to Foothill should use race the bike path. That way, it's combined with a pedestrian, it's a lot safer. And then there are ways that you can race the bike path, but then where it connects with the road, it has a slope down, so it's not a sharp drop. So there is separation, but not really a physical barrier. So the staff alternative proposed, it's feasible, but it will be very costly at this point.
Yes, because we have a final design, the contract has already been boarded, and potentially we could have compensatory damages at the back end if we terminate. But, you know, I felt compelled to come up with something, an option that...
Thank you.
Well, the main part of it too is that, you know, focusing on the bike safety that we were attempting with the Class Four, that was the other constraint. So I was looking at the parking issue. I was wanting to look at the fact that the barrier's there. Yeah, the barrier was a non-starter. We've got to have the barrier to make it truly safe for young riders to physically separate the bikes from the car traffic. So I knew that, you know, this alternative, while it was an alternative, I knew that probably the neighbors wouldn't like the removal of the park strip for good reason, you know, but there was no other way to do it on that option, given the constraints that I saw.
I've seen actually a design in China, for example, that when there's no park space, no place to park, right? But then the park strip, you can carve out some part of the park strip in between the lights to make that a parking space. Is that possible? So we still have our bypass, everything is the same, but then you could carve into the park strip, so there could be...
If I understand...
...space or two space, it's separated.
If I understand your suggestion, that would cause a cyclist to swing outside into traffic, outside...
No, I mean, what I mean is the park, the parking would be, it would be, it would not cut into the bike lane. It would be like you have the park strip, right? And then use part of the park strip as parking.
But that's currently the bike lane.
So right now, isn't there a pedestrian walk?
There's a detached side...
Is there like a diagram of what we have now?
Roger, you gotta fix your audio.
Don't we have a pedestrian, park strip, and bike path?
Yeah, we can bring up a sketch. David, can you bring up the slide that just shows the existing cross-section out there? Give us one minute. David will share his screen. This is David Stillman, our Transportation Manager.
Yeah, good evening, David Stillman, Transportation Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me see if I can share my screen with you all. So this is, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is one of the cross-sections that was displayed earlier during the public communications section. I've got this one also. This is showing the approved configuration. This was also shown earlier. So the, you see here, this is the existing curb-to-curb along the street. This is the existing park strip and then the sidewalk behind it. And the homes are over here.
So what I mean is like the area with the tree, in between the trees, you can have a parking space. This is what I see a lot in cities in China, in Taipei, where there are no space, but then in between big material trees, they have parking space.
So the park strip is about five feet wide, which isn't quite wide enough to fit a parked car. So a car, in order to access this area, would need to cross it over the bike lane to get there. And then the car, the parked car, would end up encroaching either into the sidewalk over here or into the bike lane, because a typical parked car is about six to seven feet wide.
And what if this is a parking space that's right next to a driveway? Then you will have an opening for the driveway anyway.
That's correct. The car would still encroach into the, either the bike lane or the sidewalk, however.
But then the residents will have maybe one parking space next to their driveway, right?
We would just still have the issues that David was talking about.
You would still be blocking the bike lane or the sidewalk with the parked car.
It might encroach on the sidewalk, so maybe the sidewalk needs to move, I guess.
Be pretty expensive.
And then we start getting up against, you know, the existing right-of-way and exceeding our footprint.
Okay. So how is, how about Moonie's proposal for a horseshoe configuration? So people can go in and out? Then that actually provides more parking with a horseshoe in their front yard? Would that be, but that means you cannot be, I don't like the concrete barrier. That means it's very hard to adjust once we have extra driveways, right?
Right, and actually, I believe, I don't know if Moonie's on, but he is actually doing that, planning for a U-shaped driveway.
Yeah, I know he's...
Let him speak.
Yeah? Is he still here?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Sorry, Moonie.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I'm working with the city to apply for permit to get the horseshoe driveway for my home so that I can get in and out without endangering anybody on the street.
And with that, you actually get extra parking, right?
Yes, I'll be, yeah, I'll be able to park on the horseshoe.
And then, but then, how does that affect the bike path design we have right now? Does that mean we need to cut extra openings for the exit of the horseshoe?
I believe so. That's for the, David Stillman or somebody to comment on that, yeah.
So if the bypass is complete, it will be costly to approve a horseshoe design. But if we have, we get a call from everyone, do you want to keep the reserve of opening for horseshoe design? Then we won't have to have that cost later, right?
Is that true, Roger? If we planned for horseshoe, we used to call them circular driveways, we'd have to do another cut in the barrier if it came after it was installed.
Yes, that's right. So if, I mean, if that permit application was approved, then that would just be part of the permit requirements that, you know, and if we accepted that, then that's gonna happen.
Right.
Maybe a compromise would be allowing all the residents along this Phase Two to request a horseshoe design right now before deadline, so that before we pour the concrete in, whoever that have applied for it will leave the cutout for a potential exit for the circular driveway. Would that be feasible? Then they can, if they really need parking, they can then put parking on the horseshoe.
So if I understand, sort of from talking to Moonie, there is an issue where the city needs to grant some kind of waiver or exception because the lots are a little too narrow normally for the horseshoe driveway? Is that true?
That's correct, yeah. So I got from the planning department saying, you know, the lot's width has to be 76 feet. My lot is 73 feet, three feet shorter. But then I've seen quite a few homes on this street itself that have much shorter width, like, you know, like 60 feet width. There are two of them and there's one with a 67 feet width. They do have horseshoe driveways.
Okay. So Roger, can you say what the reasoning is behind that limitation of the width of the lot? Is it, you know, why is that there? Why are we limiting it to wider lots for horseshoe driveways?
I know that there are, you know, reasons that you want the driveways so far away from the property line on the sides. Probably, I would have to check to the exact reasons there. It's more of a public question than a public justice question.
Right, I mean, I would be willing, you know, I think it's reasonable to grant exceptions in this case, just because we are, you know, taking away the street parking.
That's more of a planning question, so.
Can we ask Ken and Gary if that's, how do they think about this?
This is Ken.
Have anything to add?
Hello, this is Ken. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate you, Leon Chow, bringing up these concerns here. So, yeah, I mean, in my particular case, I don't meet the requirements because I had expanded, I had extended the front of my house out closer to the sidewalk. So when I got the specific design from the city on what requirements were for a horseshoe driveway, I didn't meet those requirements, but I didn't pursue it. And even at that time, I didn't even know that we were going to do Class Four bike paths down McClellan Road. By the way, those should not be run down through residential areas in front of all of these driveways. So it's an option for me, but it's not an option for me right now. But the primary issue really for these residents are backing out of their driveways in addition to losing on-street parking. When you narrow McClellan Road, we already have trouble backing out of our driveways. It's gonna be more problematic for everyone going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe the staff can explore exceptions to see if there are ways to make it more feasible.
Okay, do you have anything?
Okay. So can we reach out to all the residents and give them the option to request a future horseshoe circular driveway, reserve exit?
We can look into that.
Okay. Is there anything else? Leon?
Gary, want to say something?
No, I just want to say thank you, Leon. And thank you for city staff and city managers and council for listening.
Okay, thank you. So the public comment is over now. So, you know, I'm last to go, patiently waiting. No, I'm last, but, no, yeah, it's your turn. John, go ahead.
Okay, well, when you say you're last, you've already been making some comments, so I figured that was yours. Okay, so there's no question in my mind that, you know, bicycle safety is of the utmost importance. You know, we actually had, you know, the one student that was killed on this respective street, much further down, and killed, you know, when the accident happened with a gravel truck. And so the safety has got to be a high priority, but I think we also need to be aware of and looking at why the traffic is so bad. And just, I'll back up just a second. So when the city manager had the meeting with the residents, I attended, and I was very happy to hear how engaging the residents were, how they were so willing to put out ideas. They weren't, as the residents said tonight, they weren't wanting to be seen as obstinate or anti-bike path. And so I was very happy to hear that. So listening to them, and I had a couple of my own questions, you know, I sent those to the city manager and I saw her distribute them to the city council. My intent, though, was to have those resident questions along with mine, which added the types of traffic that are on McClellan, meaning the UPS truck that went flying down it during our meeting. I mean, in my view, he was well over the speed limit. And so these different options, I think, should be at least thought about. And I feel it's sad that it's so late in the game, but nonetheless, I think we as a city, city government is not industry where, you know, you got to have this done on that day. It deals with the mix of people that are in the community and they move at different paces and things of that nature. So they... paces and things of that nature. So they do have these concerns, they do have these possible ideas, and I do think that they deserve answers to each of them. I don't want to delay things, I don't want to delay things any more than anybody else, but I also want to be sure that the residents wind up feeling that we are here to listen to them and that we, we know how to get them engaged early on when it's much more appropriate to be considering these options rather than here we are at the second reading and contracts are given out. Gosh, is that the best we can do? I mean, so at any rate, I do think there are some, some options that have still been put out, the horseshoe driveways. The one question I would ask for Ken is that while he may not be able to get a horseshoe driveway on his property with his house expansion, could he in fact still get a third parking space, you know, in front? Actually, I know other people that have fairly narrow front yards, my sister being one, where it's a pie shape because she's in a cul-de-sac, and yet she has three parking spaces, just utilizing the extra area just off of the garage strip. And so if that might help Ken to get an additional one, for those times when there's not a car in that extra spot, that gives him more maneuvering space to, to get out, to work his car so that he can maybe come at, at an angle as he leaves the driveway and into the street. And if that's a option for him, I would like to include that with the possibility of these horseshoes options. So I think that pretty much covers it. The, the takeaway that I would really like to, to leave with is that I've brought this up before. I sure hope I don't have to keep saying this time and time and time again. Resident engagement should not be an afterthought. Resident engagement should be upfront. This, this type of activity has been going on since before we were on the city council. Here's 13 houses, not 100, here's 13 houses that could have had somebody go and knock on their door and come out front with them and said, you know, "This dedicated class four bike lane would have this type of an appearance and this type of effect on you. What are your thoughts?" And, you know, for the residents to get this notification on June 10th for a June 17th planning commission meeting, and then a follow-up on June 29th when we're here, you know, authorizing the payment, I, I mean, I, I find that just troubling. And if this was the first time, I'd say, "Okay, let's live and learn." Unfortunately, it's not the first time. And I've seen it happen, I have felt it happen too many times over the last year and a half. Any project that's in work now should have resident engagement as a fundamental. So bicycle safety, it's real important. I don't think I have enough support to get even a partial delay. No, I don't want to interrupt contracts that have been given, but if there was support, I would think that, you know, just telling the contractor, "Hey, full steam ahead, and we're just going to at this, at this tail end piece. It's not in the middle, it's at the tail end at one end. Let us have a little bit more time to engage with the residents", which we need anyway if we're going to be adding horseshoe driveways or extra cutouts in this additional curb. And I don't think that that should have a dramatic effect on, on the contract. So I think we have to move forward and do it with a condition, and I think, I think Councilman Paul is the best to, to add those types of conditions in, in the properly worded context. If not, you know, I think I'll give it a stab myself. So, so that's what I have to say, you know. We need, we need our bike, bike lanes to be safe, and we need to do whatever we can to do that, but we need to be listening to the residents. So, thank you.
Okay, great, I will go now. So I kind of agree with Darcy and Rod. I, when I saw the proposal for taking away the park strip, I knew it would be expensive, but it did look like the only viable alternative in terms of preserving any parking, but that, that option was not acceptable to the residents. I feel bad across, feel bad about the loss of parking, and this has been an issue wherever protected bicycle lanes are put in on these major arterial streets. And, you know, the, the issue is, we, the city wants to use the publicly owned streets not for vehicle storage, but for use by the public. And given the sad situation that we had on that road several years ago, as well as, you know, we had another death of a cyclist on Sunday morning, although it was not on this road, I just, I, I don't want to delay this any longer. So, I mean, that's, that's my feeling on this. I think we need to move forward, forward with this project.
So can I please, one more thing, actually a few more. So I think we need to learn from this experience. Yes, how come the, I, I thank you, the staff, for including the letter sent out to the residents in the agenda packet. It's really, really nice to include that, so I can see what kind of letter they receive. And it might be nice in the future, include a map, so because reading the text, it's a bit hard to figure out, "Oh, this is something that will affect my street". It's a lot of text. Maybe people just threw it away. So that's some, maybe we can do next time. And another thing is, like John said, it's 13th Street. I think we will be doing a lot more of this bike path project that will be right in front of someone's house. Why don't we put a door here in their front door besides the, the mailer? That way it's more visible. And with a map, so they know your house will be affected, so they know they need to come. I'm not sure if June 10th is the earliest we can notify them. It feels like June 10th is when everything is already designed, right? So I wonder if the timeline for this kind of design, for example, for Bollinger, since we are starting right now, that's good, so we can start earlier to talk about the different options, yeah. And so there was a photo of garbages and delivery trucks. So what's the current situation for garbages and delivery trucks? Would they be blocking their traffic after the construction? And then the garbage cans will be blocking the bike path?
No, it'll, it'll be similar to, to the phase one side where at the nose of the physical barrier, there'll be a place for the refuse cans to be there. And I've, I've spoken with recology about just taking care that they place the empty containers back into that spot, but they should, there is no reason for them to be blocking the bike lane on, on garbage day.
That's good to know. And the delivery trucks will be blocking the traffic, right?
For, yeah, for that brief moment, but that, that's a common thing that happens throughout the city.
Yeah, it's okay. Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you. I know this is a hard project. The staff has spent a lot of time to get encroachment of this, so really see this happening. Let's learn from the experience and do better for each project.
Okay. Can I, can I make a motion then that we move forward with it, but with the condition that the residents have the ability to request the horseshoe driveway, or in Ken's position, possibly that his driveway would be extra wide simply so he could utilize some of the less, less active area to the side of his house for an additional car space, if he were to choose? Do I have a second for that?
I, I don't understand what the implications would be on the current project that we have designed and the contract we have awarded. Is this something that could be done after the fact? We know... Public Works, can you help us here?
If, if it had gone through the application process early enough, and we can, we can give direction to the contractor to have the appropriate openings in the street, if it, if it happens later, then it, you know, those openings would just simply be, be made after the fact.
Yeah.
Do we need this to be part of the resolution, or can we just pass the second reading and then have additional?
Yeah, I've already sent the, I've already sent a note to, to planning and everybody to take a look at these 13 homes and look at granting the exceptions required.
Okay, so we don't need to, we can just approve that?
Yeah, if they so choose, if they, if the homeowners so choose to do that.
What I don't want to do is have this thing delayed for six more months. This is part of the bike plan we passed back in 2016, and I would like to see it move forward expeditiously. So I'll make a clean motion, and would appreciate the clerk making the second reading.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 20-2210, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending table 11.24.150 relation to prohibition of parking along certain streets.
I will second.
And, well, so I, I, I move that that resolution number 20-104 be read by title owning and the clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Um, before we go, can...
I'll move that, that, that the, this resolution, let's see, do we have to enact?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move that 20-104 be enacted.
Wait, what?
No, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong one.
It's not 2104.
No, 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 I'm sorry, okay, I apologize.
And we have to go back and fix the previous one, because you all...
Yeah, okay, so let me, we've conducted the second reading of ordinance number 20-2210, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending table 11.24.150 related to prohibition of parking along certain streets. So I will move that the clerk's reading constitute the second reading.
Great, second.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And then I will move that ordinance number 20-2210 be enacted.
Second.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And I apologize to my colleagues for my confusion on that.
Oh, that's okay.
So can I, can we at least make sure that we have council consensus on allowing exception for residents to request a horseshoe driveway?
Oh, they've always been able to request that.
Can we just record that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think, I do think in consideration of loss of parking, if, if there's something we can do, a resident comes along and says, "Later, it could be in a year or two, right? I, I really want more space." I think we ought to give that due consideration.
Yeah, it's not a big deal to, you know, saw the concrete and do...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, so we have that recorded in the minute.
Makes good sense.
Only I and John spoke about it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just, for, for my own part on that, I, I would be certainly receptive to, if necessary, allocating some funding for that. Should it be necessary to go back to the, to, 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 you know, the, the third-party contractor and ask them to, you know, literally carve out some part of the curb so that...
Is that an exception ministerial? Granted ministerially?
Maybe it is, but I, I would think we would need a budget for it.
Well, let's, well, we can go forward and figure that out. If we need budget, we'll ask.
Yeah, it's not going to be a huge amount.
Help cover the cost of an additional driveway?
No, 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 the cost of the curb cut.
I was just asking if the exception is something that planning staff...
Right, is it ministerial, or does it have to come to council for that exception?
You know, we, we still have a little bit of budget left, so I think...
I'll say, I, my office hasn't looked at this yet, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
What we can say is if it needs to come back to council, I'm hearing an interest in bringing it back.
I, I think, I think it would be good for, for us to investigate how such exception would be granted, and, you know, note those of us who have expressed interest in, in being generous in our exceptions, whatever that process looks like. I'm not asking for us to have to approve each exception.
Right. I heard, I heard it.
I mean, we...
Yeah.
I mean, even if the resident didn't want it now, we probably pretty much know where it would go if they did want it. We could leave it open now. It's not going to affect the safety of the bike lane just to leave that...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So we can look into that for sure.
We'll look into it.
There's lots of gaps in the, right, so...
Sure, I think it's just a question of, of being able to move the project forward expeditiously, so.
Okay, so we've been going for two hours and 30 minutes, so let's take, let's take a little break here and reconvene at, say, 9:18. This is item 12. This is the petition for reconsideration of the city council's decision on April 21st, 2020, to deny an appeal and uphold the approval of minor residential permit to allow a second-story balcony, application RM-2017-39, applicant Francis Kuhn, Thai residence. Project location, 21865 San Fernando Avenue, accessory parcel number 35715043. Petitioners, Shae John Huang and Eric and Cindy Fong. So the way this works, it's kind of complex. So we'll have the staff presentation and questions from council. Now, the first part is only limited to grounds for the reconsideration. So city attorney, can you explain what those are, or, or Pew, I mean, you could explain that as well? Pew, are you there, or Ben?
Mr. Mayor, I, I can speak to that.
Okay, sure.
So you are correct, after your introduction, we'll have a staff presentation, and then we'll take questions from council. Then it becomes public comments, and, and three minutes each, limited to grounds of the reconsideration. Your question is, what, what are those grounds for reconsideration? Basis for, for the recommendation, for the reconsideration has, I believe, five major points, and it's basically a new, an offer of new relevant evidence, which have not been previously produced at any public hearings. That, that is basically, basically it. So...
Right, okay, so it's new evidence that, it's not rehashing the same evidence from before that we made our decision on.
That's correct. In, in part of presentation, we'll go over that in a little bit more detail as well.
Great, so I've introduced the agenda item, now I guess we are ready for the staff report.
Thank you. We, we have, we have Erica Poveta here as a project planner, which you met through the first round of the appeal. She has a very detailed presentation for you on this item, and of course afterwards, we'll happy to answer any questions that council may have. With that, I will hand over to, to Erica. Erica?
Thank you. All right, I will share my presentation with you. Okay. Um, so good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Erica Poveta. And again, this item is for the petition of reconsideration for a minor residential permit number RM-2017-39. The petitioners, Shae Jiang Hen and Eric and Cindy Feng are requesting a reconsideration of the City Council's decision on April 21st to deny an appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of a second-story balcony. The proposed balcony is located at 21865 San Fernando Avenue in the Montavista neighborhood. The petition for reconsideration was filed by the two adjacent property owners at 21875 and 21861 San Fernando Avenue. The Cupertino Municipal Code contains procedures for interested parties to petition the City Council to reconsider its decisions. The grounds for reconsideration are limited to the following. An offer of new relevant evidence, which in the exercise of reasonable diligence could not have been produced at any earlier city hearing. An offer of relevant evidence, which is improperly excluded at any prior city hearing. Proof of facts, which demonstrate that the City Council proceeded without or in excess of jurisdiction. Proof of facts, which demonstrate that the City Council failed to provide a fair hearing. And proof of facts, which demonstrate that the City Council abused its discretion by not proceeding in a manner required by law. Rendering a decision which is not supported by findings of facts and/or rendering a decision in which the findings of facts were not supported by the evidence. And the petitioners identified all grounds except for grounds number three in their petition for reconsideration. And now I will outline the, each grounds of reconsideration as submitted by the petitioners, along with staff's findings of facts and responses. So the first basis of consideration, reconsideration is an offer of new relevant, which could, relevant evidence, which could not have been produced at any earlier city hearing. And the petitioners state that the original project proposal was previously excluded from the staff report. The original project proposal does not constitute relevant evidence as it was not approved by the city. Additionally, staff outlined the major revisions to the original proposal in the staff reports for the previous appeal hearings for Planning Commission as well as City Council. Additionally, the plans that that was approved by the city was included in the April 21st City Council packet for the appeal hearing. Um, corresponding, or correspondence, including an email and letters from the petitioners, was also provided by the petitioners as evidenced. However, the correspondence does not constitute new evidence as it was already presented and considered at previous city appeal hearings. The petitioners also provide excerpts from the general plan listed in the staff report and the petition. However, the petitioners do not provide an explanation for how this evidence is related or relevant to the project and why this evidence could not have been produced at a previous city hearing. Staff finds that the petitioners have offered no new relevant evidence that could not have been produced at any earlier city hearing. The second basis for their reconsideration is an offer of relevant evidence, which was improperly excluded at any prior city hearing. The petitioners state that the evidence listed in the staff report and petition was presented at the previous appeal hearings but was not addressed. And this evidence includes the petitioners' research for neighborhood compatibility, human rights, information on the city website, left-side elevation plan, Google Maps, and a petition. Uh, staff found that all evidence presented in the petition was either submitted by staff or as part of the appeal packets or by the petitioners at the appeal hearing. The Planning Commission and the City Council discussed this evidence presented, made modifications to the project, and determined that the proposed balcony meets the minor residential findings in the single-family residential ordinance. Staff finds that the petitioners have offered no relevant evidence that was improperly excluded at any prior city meeting, nor have the petitioners proven that the evidence was previously excluded by the City Council. Now the third basis is proof of facts, which demonstrate that the City Council failed to provide a fair hearing. The petitioners argue that staff made false and misleading comments regarding project events and that the City Council was asked to read staff's draft resolution, which may mislead the council members in knowing or understanding the whole story, thus impacting their decisions. Uh, the City Council's staff report provided a factual account of the approved project and how it meets the single-family residential ordinance. It also outlined the project provisions leading up to the City Council appeal. In addition to the staff report, City Council also heard and considered presentations from the property owner and applicant, as well as the petitioners, prior to making their decision to deny the appeal. The petitioners also argue that staff and City Council were not aware of the approved balcony width. However, the only, sorry, only the depth of the balcony was included in council's motion to modify the project. The petitioners argue that the City Council appeal hearing had a court feeling and claim that the property owner and applicant were supported by the city. The appeal hearing was conducted in the manner required by the municipal code. And the City Council considered all materials and information presented by staff, the appellants, and property owner before making a decision. Finally, the petitioners claim that the city did not provide evidence on how the residential design fits with the general plan, how the house and balcony is harmonious in scale to the general neighborhood, and how the house design meets the requirements of the guide, of the residential guidelines. Uh, staff addressed all these issues in the staff report, as well as the resolution presented at Planning Commission and City Council appeal hearings. And City Council considered the evidence presented by all parties prior to making the decision to, to deny the appeal. Staff finds that the petitioners have not provided any proof of facts, which demonstrate that the City Council failed to provide a fair hearing. The last basis identified by the petitioners is proof of facts, which demonstrate that the City Council abused its discretion by not proceeding in a manner required by law, rendering a decision which was not supported by findings of facts and/or rendering a decision in which the findings of facts were not supported by the evidence. The petitioners claim that the majority of the hearing time was spent researching and clarifying council's authority to change the plans, which did not leave enough time to evaluate the project. During the meeting, the city attorney clarified council's discretion and council deliberated on the project's potential impacts, made amendments to the project, and rendered a decision to approve the project with a reduced balcony depth. The petitioners claim that staff's personal opinions were involved by saying that the residential addition would not become a short-term rental unit. However, the staff report did not state whether or not the addition would become an STR unit in the future. Rather, it clarified that the city currently has regulations regarding STR activities and is in the process of adopting an STR ordinance. The petitioners also state that they were unable to provide further explanation, defend, or clarify information at the City Council appeal hearing. At the hearing, the appellants and applicants were permitted 10 minutes to address the council, which is consistent with the city's procedures for public hearings. Additionally, the mayor also allowed petitioner Cindy Feng additional three minutes to respond and provide clarifications. Staff finds that the petitioners have not provided any proof of facts that demonstrate that the council abused its discretion by not proceeding in a manner required by law, rendering a decision which was not supported by findings of facts or rendering a decision in which the findings of facts were not supported by the evidence. In summary, the petition for reconsideration does not meet the requirements of the Cupertino Municipal Code, section 2.08.096. Staff therefore recommends that the City Council deny the petition for reconsideration and uphold the April 21st City Council decision.
Okay, thank you. So now we will open this to questions from council. Who would like to go? Does any, I don't have any questions. Does anyone have questions on this? Liang? Rod? Okay, Darcy?
Uh, no, I do not have questions.
Okay, John?
Um, just one, and it's probably not correct to ask, but for the deck, it does require privacy protection, a planting plan. Can you just double-check, remind me about that? That does nothing for noise, but at least it visually separates the neighbors.
Well, John, right now we're only talking about whether there's grounds for reconsideration.
Yeah, well, that's why I made that statement.
Right, if we decide there are grounds, then, then you could bring that up.
So that's, that's really my only question, is just to better understand, remind me.
Okay, so now we will open it up to public comments. So anyone that wishes to comment on the grounds for reconsideration, you can raise your hand.
Mayor, I do have a presentation from Bill Black-Hojens. Um, Bill, if you'd like to raise your hand.
Um, oh yeah, I see.
He didn't have it raised, but he has it now.
Okay, yeah, all right, go ahead, welcome, Bill.
I think I.
Just give me a moment to pull it up.
Okay.
I think I'm going second, I think Mr. Huang is going first.
Uh, oh, I didn't see his hand raised, so that's why.
So let me unraise my hand.
Okay, let me go back to, um, okay, he does not have his hand raised, but, Jim, did you wish to speak?
He's a, he's a panelist mayor, so he's under the panelist tab.
Oh, I'm looking at, um, let's see. I am looking, okay, all right, there we go, okay, uh, wel, welcome, go ahead. I think you need to unmute yourself as well. There you go, okay, there you go.
I don't believe, Mr. Mayor, these are not members of the public, these are the appellants, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, right, um.
Okay, so does that mean I cannot speak then?
So, Madam City Attorney, you know, this is for public comments. Um, the, the appellants are part of the public, are they not?
Yes, that's correct. Um, we have a hearing procedure that allows them to speak first as members of the public on this portion of the appeal.
Right, and then if the appeal, then if we grant the petition for reconsideration, they would speak as the appellants.
That's correct, so they have three minutes as other.
Okay, so go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Huang. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, City Council, for spending time on my last appeal and current appeal. In last appeal, you decided to reduce the depth of the balcony to 12 feet based on the knowledge the width was 13 feet. The breadth was 13 feet 11 inches. The planning department did not provide this detail for you. Uh, so the overall size should not exceed 156, which is 13 times 12, and this is shown in the April 24th letter. In May 11, uh, should not exceed 156 square feet was dropped with actual width, then the size will increase to 167. It's larger than 156, agreed on the last council meeting. I'm not sure whether the planning department is aware of this. These are the letters in, yeah, just for reference, okay. The size and location of the balcony are neighbors' big concern, and how can you be harmonious in scale and design with the neighborhood? The balcony and the carport are in the middle of the backyard, and the house is already the longest, and you will cause the neighbor great pain. Standing in my backyard, I can perceive that this expansion with balcony caused adverse visual impact. I mean, trees itself would not be able to mitigate the impact. It is the size and location of this balcony causing it. In Montavista neighborhood, most of the balcony are on one side or at the front of the street. My house has a grandfather external staircase with a 17-square-foot landing located at the back of my short house, built in 1944. I moved to Cupertino in 2007. It was built by past owner. My house is already 76 years old. Sooner or later, it will be rebuilt by someone. A more considerate design will probably be proposed. Once Mr. Tai's large balcony is built, the neighbor will suffer from it for the next 50 years or more. Mr. Tai complained about his family lost privacy, but he would do the same for the neighbors for decades to come. Home issue will change. Our structure will stay the same for many, many decades. There are about 40 same-type of lots in this neighborhood. Once this way of putting a large balcony in the middle of the backyard is built, others can follow the same way to build. Thank you very much. Thank you, City Council, for giving me the chance.
Okay, um, next we have Eric and Cindy Fong, welcome.
Good evening, uh, my daughter Elizabeth will screen here. We're not in the same place. I'm not sure how to use it, so I will speak and then she will share the screen. Is that, see how it works?
Okay, very good. And, and once again, remind everyone, this is only a question about the grounds for reconsideration. It's not a discussion of the merits of the balcony.
Okay. Uh, could, should I start it now?
Go, yes, I'll start the clock, okay.
All right. 258 square feet carport was not included in discussion in commission meeting. Both permits was applied. Also not included in the discussion in the city meeting. I was confused and wish to discuss the carport tonight. The next one? In the staff report, the third car space converted to a carport is an error. Original draft show is a three-car garage and a carport. So carport was already there. Uh, second is balcony, and I believe Councilmember John described our concern very well, so.
But if it, but if it was about 70, 80, 90, even 100 square feet, we're kind of limited in terms of the number of people that could be gathering, talking, and even having music. And as that screens get bigger and bigger, the gathering can get bigger and bigger. And now it's, it's more of a birthday party celebration or, or, so I am concerned. I, I, I really want to understand both sides. You know, and the, the property owner conforming to R1, I think is really great. I, I think, Planning Commissioner, uh, Fung said, you know, we probably need to make a change to our balcony or to our R1 code to address balconies. I mean, when we start adding that, that much, you know, 280 square feet of balcony, and that could entail, um, you know, supporting big parties up there. So I'm concerned about that. It's a scary situation for the neighbors to have spaces elevated that conceivably, maybe not by his use or his family, but by a subsequent owner of the house. Especially if the house was ever sold to somebody who turned it into a short-term rental, and we see on TV what happens with short-term rentals.
Uh, John spoke every neighbor's deepest fear. Size, the noise, party, and the short-term rental. Mr. Tai's new two-story addition at the end of house is. Mr. Tsai's new two story addition at the end of house is longer than neighbors, already caused pain. Adding on 284 balcony in the backyard is scary. Even with the reduction, balcony still in the grass area due to the already loaned house. So be fair, over 60 neighbors signed to oppose balcony and carport. We hope to reconsider this balcony, reduce size more, or build differently, or no balcony and no carport. I'm willing to sign the waiver for planting trees, and thank you. I'm willing to answer questions. Thank you.
Was there anybody else here to speak, or do you, let me see, nobody else from panelists? How about from attendees? No one else from attendees? So, okay, we can bring it back to council now to deliberate on whether or not there were any...
I raised my hand, I didn't see.
Oh, I'm sorry, what is your name?
David Tsai.
Oh, okay, sorry, I see you there now. Okay, welcome, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, planning committee staff, and our neighbors. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership and hard work, especially during this difficult time for everyone. My name is David Tsai, and along with my wife and five kids, who are going to school right now, distant school and past their bedtime, but we live in 21865 San Fernando Avenue, Cupertino. We agree with the staff's finding and assessments. Again, we're here just to talk about if this should be reconsidered or not, so I won't go into all the, rehash the details that we already talked about. We tried reading through the neighbor's last appeal document, and again, found ourselves crying foul for everyone about what the neighbor had stated. It really reaffirmed our unfortunate and painful experiences with these two neighbors over the last four years, since we first talked to them about our project and kindly asked for their prayers. The fact is, our project has met and exceeded all the city code and requirements, but even then, we still try so hard, as you know, we talked about, to voluntarily accommodate Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang over and over again. Now frustratingly, nothing seemed fair nor okay to them unless everyone agrees with them completely and do everything they demand. With the City Council resolution on April 21, our proposed deck now has more than 68 feet of setback. We have very long lots, as you could tell, where only 20 feet is usually required by the city code for the neighbors and everyone else in the city. So I struggle with what more I need to say because there is nothing new to talk about. As the staff report stated, the appeal has no new findings nor valid reasons for reconsideration. Thanks to the diligent work of Erica, the city staff, planning committee, and the City Council, it's clear all the process and procedures have been followed and executed properly over the last 15 years. I trust the City Council would also reach that same conclusion. However, my offer to Mr. Huang and Mr. and Mrs. Fang to move on from all this and get together to fellowship and prayer about life struggles still stand, but we do not want to be further penalized and discriminated against by their thinking and choices. So again, we're here just to talk about if there's any ground for reconsideration. So lastly, thank you and for your time on this project, and more importantly, for all your leadership and service during this unprecedented challenging time. We want, make sure you guys stay well for everyone. Thank you.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Back to attendees, I see the hand raised of Bill Black-Hogans or Hogans, welcome.
Yeah, Hogans, you got it. Hey, can I share from this side? I made a change on the last slide. Is that possible? Kirsten?
No, you can't share from your side. It has to be sent to Kirsten.
All right, then I'll go with what I got. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's because of Zoom bombing that we have that.
No, no, I totally get it. I could be putting up something crazy, it makes sense. Okay, so go ahead and present my deck. So while that's coming up, I'm a, just kind of a concerned citizen in Cupertino, and I hear both Mr. Tsai's family's version, and is someone going to put up my deck? And, and also Mr. Huang as well? Is someone going to put up my deck?
Kirsten, is that his deck there?
There we go. All right, we, we can mutually hit the start button. So, and I, and I get the idea about code, we all understand code, but I think they, I think the, the gotcha here is harmonious in scale. So, next slide. And what we're getting at is, if you look at the definition of harmonious, I'm not going to read all that, next slide. It's, and you hear it in the green here, it's having agreement with the constituent elements, it's the green, parts agreeably related, consonant agreeing, accord in sentiment or action, and it's not about numbers, it's not about 12 times 10 or any of that stuff. Next slide. And don't bother reading this, that first part, you should recognize it except for the color, that's a statement that you folks have generated. The red items, I've restated them down below, there's six, they're right there, A, B, C, D, E, F, and so we'll just, we'll just grab some of those. One of them says compatible with the surrounding uses of the neighborhood. That's not a true statement. There are no similar examples such as what they're planning to build. B, enhance the identity of the residential neighborhoods. That's a misappropriation of, of what, what the council or anyone considers the identity of the neighborhood. That neighborhood has an identity. This new project will clearly be outside of that identity. C, compatibility and scale, I think we all agree, that's not a true statement. Scale is many times of what already exists. D, reinforce predominantly low intensity community. This is not a low intensity project, obviously beyond the scale of what's in the neighborhoods. E, second story rear ward, harmonious scale? You know, harmonious, that's conjecture. Do you folks have actually a definition, a numbers definition of harmonious? I don't think so. So falls back on to the Webster's definition of agreement. I think that this is kind of the clear point here. And then lastly, F, compatible with the general neighborhood, again, there's no compatible examples. Next slide. So I actually redid the points one through four over there, but fundamentally, there's a number of neighborhood, there's a number of people in the neighborhood that you don't have any such example of, of a large project like this, so it's inconsistent with what the neighborhood's about. And as a matter of fact, it wasn't clear when I was listening to the audio back in April 21, whether we really understood what neighborhood we're talking about. I think the city should shoulder the burden of doing some investigative work to find out what the relative facts and numbers are of the, of the neighborhood, and then bring them forth and say, okay, this is what the numbers are, we should stay consistent with that. And then, of course, it's already been brought up, points three and four, in terms of setting precedents, you put a future building permit, and there's going to be others going to do the same thing, it will forever change the original identity of that neighborhood. So you run the risk of doing that with a, with a large, a very large thing. So going back to point three right there, I know I have one more, overtime, the proposed project is harmonious in scale and design with the general neighborhood, that is not a true statement. That right there, it's in violation of municipal code 19 dot 28 dot 140 A dash three, therefore you folks should really reconsider that appeal, and that's all I have to say. Sorry to be overtime.
That's okay. Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So thank you, slide. There we go, thank you. Have a good day.
Oh, wow, that's a lot of languages, okay. Let me see if there's anyone else. Oh, I have one more person who raised her hand, Kitty Moore, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. I was wondering if you would, along with Councilmember Chow, mention what the new housing bills will actually allow for these housing lots in the future, since the property owners may not be aware. So if you could share what you've learned from the LRC, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Are you referring to ADUs or what?
Well, the 1120 is still viable. What that would do to, my understanding is that you could end up with eight units and two parcels, and I think perhaps they're using the ADU and junior ADU bills to get to that number, but just anything you, you want to share about that? Thank you.
Right, I mean, it is possible if these, you know, any of these laws pass, that a property owner could tear down their existing structure and build something with, you know, it's debatable whether it's four units or six units or eight units, the bills have not become law yet and may not, so I wouldn't want to speculate on, on that, but it is true that these lots could end up not with a single family home anymore, but with a multifamily property.
And also, if these bills passed, they will be able to have, say duplex by right, which...
Yeah, but, excuse me, but what in the world does this have to do with the matter at hand here? Well, I'm sorry, it was a question by a resident, so...
That's not what we're here for. We're here to conduct our business, Stephen. Let's get on with it.
But it's a warning that if we don't, they can come back after January 1st.
Right, I know, but this, you know, but...
The council have no power to approve or not approve.
Councilmember Singh is correct, and I apologize. You are correct. This is only to decide if there are grounds for the petition for reconsideration. It's not to debate whether or not the balcony is a good plan, a bad plan, or what future state laws will allow on the lot. It's only about the reconsideration, and I apologize for letting this go, you know, digress like this. So did anyone else wish to speak on this, and only on whether or not there are grounds for reconsideration? Seeing no one?
Hi, Mayor, can I speak? My hand is raised in the chat. I'm Elizabeth.
Hold on, let me... You're in the panelists or the...
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I see you there now, okay. Okay, hold, let me lower the hand of people that already spoke, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I wanted to hinge upon what Bill said. I am also a resident of Cupertino. I've grown here, grown up here ever since I was small, and so I noticed the change and the development around Cupertino, especially Montavista area. And I totally agree with Bill that in terms of what he said about harmonious, I, I myself personally have not found any evidence to show that this project is, that, that you can find a project like this in our neighborhood, I'm specifically saying Montavista. I, I do not know of any backyard balconies except for Jay's, but of course, this is grandfathered, so he didn't have a choice. And I, it's just a concern because this balcony, it's really, really big. Originally, it was 20 feet, and then with the council's help, it was reduced to 12 feet, which is still much larger than a normal sized balcony. But I guess the biggest concern for residents is just that the balcony is not at the front of the house, it's not on the side, but it's really at the back of a really long house. So that is the concern. And another thing I wanted to bring up is, is the municipal code, when it's the R1 ordinance, in the meetings that I've attended with the planning commissioners or even the city council one, there was a primary focus on the building development regulations, so it's the numbers setbacks, and actually, the findings, which is also part of the R1 ordinance in the code, was not actually discussed at all and, or brought up by the staff in the planning commission, but it was brought up in the city council. And I appreciate whoever created that code because I see a balance, I see a black and white numbers and rigidity in the, in the regulations, but then it doesn't take into context, like where this house is being built, like who, what's the lot design, who are the neighbors, how are their houses? But I appreciate the findings because it adds a humanistic element, which is more subjective, and it really appreciates the neighborhood that this house is built in. So I just like to propose that in the future, when the staff gives the report or in all these meetings, that there's equal emphasis on both the numbers and where that house is actually built in order to protect everyone. It just seems the best viable scenario for a house like this. So, thank you. We are, we do want Cupertino to continue to develop, so we're not against it, but we do want the developments to be a model example for future developments. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council now. We've done public comment. Is there any more deliberation before we entertain a motion?
I'll just make a comment, and that is, these decisions are not easy, and so I, I think both the, the neighbors and the property owner realize that it is a challenge for us on things that are very subjective, and I'm giving it very careful consideration, you know, and then have to keep things to a reasonable sense, and I think we did that, you know, when we brought the fence down, I think it was 28, and brought it down to 12. So I, I think we, we have done our responsibility. I do think we need to put a hard number, whether it's a percentage of the lot size or the house size in our code, and I'll save that for another night.
Yeah, I agree with you, you know, and what Planning Commissioner Fong had mentioned about that, is that we really need to look at doing an ordinance about, about balconies specifically. But, you know, other than that, I will, I will make a motion that we adopt resolution 20 dash 104, denying the petition for reconsideration, which does not meet the requirements of the Cupertino Municipal Code, section 2.08, point 096.
Second.
Okay, we have a vote, please?
Can I say something?
Oh, no, you already had your opportunity, we're already voting.
So I'd like to thank all the residents, you guys have done a lot of homework, and you have pointed out there are some subjective or part in our ordinance, and I hope you guys continue to be engaged, because as we mentioned, these, all these subjective parts need to be turned into objective. What do we mean by harmonious? What do we, can we define that by an average of maybe, maybe houses within a certain, certain radius? If, if we, we need to quantify that by numbers so that in the future, we, we, it will not, everyone is more clear what to follow, because future projects, council won't even have any ability to decide. Thank you.
Okay, can you conduct the vote, please, Kirsten?
Member Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Singh?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Scharf?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we're skipping over item 13, moving on to 14. I would also urge everyone to try to be succinct, and once we, once you've had your say and we vote, don't bring up more points. Okay, this is...
Mayor Scharf, on that, I just, I just want to point out that it is appropriate procedure to deliberate after motion is made. That's under Rosa's permission.
I thought it was to make amendments to the motion.
No, no, you're supposed to, you're supposed to bring a motion and then have deliberation, so...
Okay, all right, then I stand corrected. Okay, we are on to item 14, municipal code amendments to regulate short term rental activity in the city, a new chapter 5.08, short term rental activity is proposed and amendments are proposed to chapter 312, transient occupancy tax. transient occupancy tax, Chapter 1908, and Chapter 19120, home occupations of the Cupertino Municipal Code. Minor process-related clarifications are also proposed in Chapter 19.12. Applicants, City of Cupertino, citywide. So can we have the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, council members. I'll be providing a, hopefully, lengthy short, uh, presentation on the short-term rental ordinance. Everyone see my presentation okay?
Yep.
Okay.
You might want to go to presentation mode.
Yeah, that's odd. Let's try this again. There might be a screen issue, let me stop shooting. Try. Okay, so, no, it's still doing that.
Well, we see it now.
Okay. Let's flick through this. Okay, so short-term rental ordinance, um, just as a reminder, uh, staff did bring this item, uh, back, or brought this item first on July 7th, um, where we conducted the first hearing, the item was approved 5-0. Um, staff is recommending some changes to the operative date and regulations, so the large, the ordinance is largely unchanged. Um, the changes that we are proposing are to ensure a continuity of regulations for compliance and enforcement of existing and proposed regulations between the adoption date and the effective date. So just going to go over the changes that were made. So, uh, the application was modified to require all adults to be listed as house. This is to ensure a host will not, a host will not register on multiple residences. We're also asking for a government-issued ID. Uh, multiple SDRs, SDRs, you know, people move and they move, they may move within the city, so if a host has engaged in multiple SDRs, they must provide evidence of compliance with the regulations, the list of SDRs, proof of compliance and payment of TOT. Registration, so, uh, as part of the registration, we extended the timeframe to prevent a violator from registering from six months to 12 months. Additionally, no SDR operator who has had the registration revoked may apply, uh, or may be allowed to register for an SDR. Um, the term violation has also been clarified to mean any violation of the city's ordinance. For clarification, the timeframe for which violations would count towards, uh, towards the overall violation number was extended from six to 12 months. Uh, the term violation was also clarified in there. Home occupation language was added to continue with the current SDR limitations until the ordinance becomes operative. The effective date, um, so portions of the ordinance will take effect after 30 days, uh, with the main SDR regulations coming into effect on January 1st. Uh, one of the items we do look for some council direction is the enforcement of expectation, uh, the, the enforcement option. So enforcement is currently managed by one full-time code enforcement officer. So that officer, um, enforces other provisions of the city's municipal code, uh, while also enforcing SDR regu, uh, SDR operators, but this is all done on reactive basis. Uh, between September 2014 and July 2020, the city has a total of 19 SDR cases, so these, uh, these complaints were related to noise, traffic, parking, and, uh, unpermitted construction among several other items. So, uh, in the next slide, we'll see how the enforcement levels, uh, penciled out, but there's three kind of enforcement options that we're, we're looking at. So it's proactive, semi-reactive, and reactive. Proactive is the most intense approach to ensure the highest level of registration and compliance. This would involve annual inspections and, and ongoing response to nuisance complaints. There's, there's an estimated compliance rate of about 90% or more. Semi-proactive aims to provide satisfactory registration, compliance with known SDRs, uh, while providing reactive response. No, no annual inspections anticipated for this, and there's a estimated compliance rate of 70%. Reactive essentially maintains status quo on registration, compliance, and nuisance complaints. Uh, compliance really is placed on hosts, and there's no annual inspections. The estimated compliance here is around 30%. So for the fees, um, so these are kind of the costs that we, we, we run the numbers on, and it's a bit detailed more in the staff report, this is just an overview. Uh, so the cost here includes contract staffing, third-party monitoring, and an hour of staff time to process the applications. The third-party monitoring is highly recommended to have a minimal level of success. They provide, um, kind of data crunching on the backend, kind of scouring the interwebs to see any operators from various sites. So for proactive, you're looking at a contract staff for about one and a half people. Semi-reactive, you're looking at a contract staff for one person. Reactive, about half-person, half-time. Um, so fees are, are estimated on a full cost recovery model, and we broke down fees by the estimated number of SDRs. So 200 is around the number that we're experiencing right now, that's what the data is showing. Um, 400 is about where we were operating before shelter in place. Uh, so public noticing, um, our typical noticing, this is again, um, we did a lot more noticing for the, uh, original, uh, project and went through all that. This is just the, the council noticing. Uh, environmental review, uh, so exempt from sequel through these provisions, so not, no potential resulting in a physical change in the environment, either directly or indirectly, that's 15378. Uh, 15601B3 and 15304 is that it can be seen with certainty to have no possibility of significant effect on the environment, and because the ordinance is a minor alteration to land use limitations. So our next steps would be the first reading of the ordinance, or first rereading of the ordinance. Uh, second reading is scheduled for, uh, September 15th, and we are looking for a fee schedule, uh, looking at a fee schedule amendment. So this is the recommendation, um, again, the first part, uh, 1A and B is typical draft ordinance language. Two is a budget appropriation to, um, get, you know, determine what the level enforcement is, and then, um, give, provide direction to staff for a registration fee, essentially full cost recovery or lower, and we'll bring a, a fee amendment, uh, to later date. And that concludes the presentation. And we do have myself here, Katie Nomura, the city manager's office, Philip Wilcom, our senior current enforcement officer, and Pugos, our planning manager, to answer any questions.
All right, great. Uh, first, we will go to our, um, members of the public. I have, oh, I just lost that. Two people that wish to speak. The first one is a phone-in caller from, ending in 5101. Go ahead. Go ahead, yeah.
So, I was, I was actually hoping to speak on item 13. I know that you skipped over it, I wasn't sure why.
Oh, no, we're going back to it. It's because that's going to be a very long item, so we decided to do these other items first because then people don't have to wait, you know, till, you know, 3:00 AM, so.
Okay, I, is it really going to be out later? My goodness.
It is possible, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll stay on.
Okay. Next, we go to Jennifer, welcome.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, welcome. Oh, I don't, why am I saying welcome? Yes, it could be 3:00 AM. Uh, anyway, I hope you can hear me. Uh, I sent out a letter about the churn rules, and I'm just going to pick a few hints out of it. I think the churn rules need to provide park for their guests on rental property and not on street. The rent needs to be well-manned so it does not become a volatile problem, tragedy, etc. By Arinda, our churn return, we're hoping Trusica.
Jennifer, we can't really hear you. Your audio is so garbled, we can't understand the words.
Uh, okay, if you guys can, uh, read the letter, I, please have, oh, keep them parked on their property, don't need to re, 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 I, I think that the bulk that Arinda have, which allows the seed to have control over, um, fines.
We can't, Jennifer, we can't understand a word you're saying.
Okay, read letter.
Okay. Kirsten, can you, uh, read what Jennifer sent in?
Uh, when, when did you send it, Jennifer?
Um, at, uh, two, two PM.
Okay.
You said it can go sometimes to 2:00 or 3:00 AM.
It went to.
Uh, I think.
I can then deter again now.
Uh, I, I'm sure I can find it here. Um, okay, I've got one for item 14 on city council, right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I will read it.
It's under. It's what I've been saying.
It's under three minutes, so I will read it. Dear council, I am writing about item 14 on the Cupertino City Council Agenda on August 18, 2020, which is the regulation of short-term rentals. I know that short-term rentals need to provide parking for their guests on the rental property and not on the str, I think that they need to provide parking on rental property, not on the street. The rental needs to be well-managed so it does not become a volatile problem slash tragedy such as evidenced by an Arinda short-term rental on Halloween two years ago. That means that owners need to live in the house or be on-site when renting to guests. There should be a set maximum of guests so that the property and the neighborhood is not overwhelmed by large parties and gatherings that people, such as Cupertino neighbors, have encountered with a rental on Sunrise Drive. Requiring the property owner to have a business license and agreement with the city over their rental terms gives the city the ability to understand issues with a particular rental and better maintain control over the site. The city should contract with a third-party service that allows 24-hour live contact with the person in the event of issues with the short-term rental. This live-attended hotline service will allow residents, neighbors, to report issues slash concerns slash emergencies with a rental to achieve the most efficient handling of concerns for all parties involved. Also, short-term rentals should not be allowed in ADUs, which they're not, which have their own concerns for the neighbors, et cetera. They, I think you meant, their neighbors should not be further overwhelmed by a large, loud, dangerous parties at ADUs, which can be four feet from a property line. Thank you very much for your concern into the issues of short-term rentals and having them be a pleasant experience for the neighbors and not a dangerous or aggravating one. This is really Jennifer Griffin. Okay. Let me go back and see if anyone else from the public wishes to speak on this. Seeing no one, we can bring it back to council for discussion. Okay, who would like to go first on this?
I can go, if you like.
Okay, sure, go.
Well, I appreciate the work staff has done to ameliorate the situation, the problem that we've had. I know we have some good learning that's, that's occurred through that, which is why we're back to a first reading. Uh, so I, I think it makes sense to, uh, go forward redoing this first reading. I also think it makes sense to choose the middle option. Let's start there and see what that does. I think, um, you know, uh, cost, cost does matter. We, we want to be sure we're done, but, uh, you know, if we have recurring problems, I think I would, I would, uh, move to the proactive option, but I think it's appropriate to start with the middle one, so that's where I sit.
Okay, so the fees are set for total recovery, right?
That's correct.
Okay, um, do we know what fees other cities are charging that have chosen each option?
Yeah, they, they vary between about 165 and 274 with, and then also a business license, uh, fee.
Wait, and how much are we, uh, my presentation is very slow to load. How much are we saying for the most aggressive option?
The most aggressive option, the proactive, uh, based off 200 SDRs, we're looking at 2,287.45 cents. Based off 400, SDR is 1,265.72 cents.
And you said other cities were down in the hundreds, though.
Yeah, they're.
Larger cities.
They, they're, in the level of enforcement, um, a lot of these cities just kind of let them do their thing. Um, we provide a kind of a different free fee estimate based off additional staffing to help support, um, you know, really effective, uh, effective enforcement.
Right, yeah, I mean, 30% didn't seem like much.
And then the other, the, the other thing too is about, uh, whether or not we want to do full cost recovery. That's, that's one of the big things. Do you, do you want this to be subsidized with the TOT that's coming in from these? Um, or do you want the SDR operators to be paying the, the cost of, of the enforcement?
Sometimes, um, other cities will choose to not do full cost recovery so that they don't deter people from registering, so they keep it, um, they try to keep the cost a little bit lower, unknowing that then the city has to, um, kind of pitch in from the general fund.
Right, and if, if it's too high, people might not do it, and then we don't get the TOT either.
Well, we do have TOT through our VCA with Airbnb, but if they use another platform.
Right, no, I'm saying if it costs, if the, if it costs too much upfront for the regist, for the licensing and registration, they may just say, well, I'm not going to do a short-term rental, it's just too costly.
Or they might just not register.
Yeah, or, right, exactly.
And one of the items we do propose in the fee is third-party compliance, which would help with that, actually catching those people who are, uh, trying to avoid registration. Um, that's one of the things we, we highly recommend, uh, as part of the implementation.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Um, Darcy, anything?
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the fees, they just seem very high.
Yes, they do.
Compared to the, uh, the previous cities as well. So I, I don't know how much, uh, registration rate we would expect if that were to happen.
And we will be bringing the fee schedule amendment, which will decide the actual fee at a future date, but if you do have any input in regards to how would you like us to explore a couple different options, a full cost recovery or lower, um, that would be helpful.
Well, yeah, also what the average rent is on these, um, maybe those fees are not outrageous if they're, you know, getting $400 a night.
Yeah, maybe not, maybe not. I mean, it could change pretty soon, too. Yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, with, with that direction, if we can put it off, it would be good to get a sense of where we would sit, uh, among all of our peers. I mean, if, if we're just, you know, much, much higher even at our minimum, you know, being considered in the 600s then, um, I, I think, I think it would, uh, you know, for me, for me, it would be kind of a matter of trying to figure out if, uh, it makes sense for us to be so much more than other cities. But as for what's on the table right now, um, I also would go for the middle tier of enforcement. And so, um, you know, I, I, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to bring forward a motion for, for deliberation.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Kirsten, can you?
But before you do that, could we each kind of comment? Because it may flavor your motion.
Yeah, I mean, I would just bring the motion onto the table that is under the recommendation, um, along with the middle, uh, budget appropriation for the, um, for the, that would be semi-proactive.
Right.
So that's, that's all I would do, just for, for discussion's sake, so we'd have.
Okay, great, okay.
I would second that, Marshall.
Okay, that's great, now we can, now we can have the discussion.
Well, I, okay, I, I mean, assuming the first reading has been conducted, I mean, if people are okay with that, so, so just, um, do I have to read the whole thing? It's, it's, it's in the, uh.
We're doing a, another first reading, so we still need to do the first reading.
Yeah, okay, so I guess let's do the first reading, and then, um, I'll, I'll bring the motion forward.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 20 dash 3200, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending Title III, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.12, transient occupancy tax. Revenue and Finance, amending Title V, Business License and Regulations, Chapter 5.08, Short-Term Rental Activity, amending specified chapters of Title 19, zoning of the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 19.08, definitions, Chapter 19.12, administration, and Chapter 19.120, home occupations, to regulate short-term rental uses in residential zoning districts.
Okay, I would move, one, that, um, the city, that ordinance number 20 dash 2200 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Second?
And, and second, to approve a budget appropriation of 283,889. dollars on the middle level of enforcement as described by staff.
Second.
And then as to the cost recovery item, I think we're just going to relegate that to direction, so perhaps we can bring a different motion after deliberation has occurred.
Okay, let's bring it back for deliberation. John, you wanted to go?
So, I'm kind of trying to remember, was it the first reading or was it tonight? Jennifer reminded us that, you know, a potential problem if it's not owner occupied, and that's what we saw on the recent issue, where the owner sublet out the entire space and then that person did the short-term rental distribution. And so, what is the, what's the wording in our current ordinance? I would be in favor that it must be owner occupied. Now, last time when we had the first reading, we, I remember some discussion that, well, we don't want to force it to be owner occupied in the sense that somebody wants to go to Europe all summer long and rent it out as a short-term rental for the summer, and so we don't want it to be necessarily owner occupied at the time that the short-term rental person is there. But with that, then, I would be wanting to put some verbiage in there that says, "The short-term rental has to be done by the owner that, and the owner must be an occupant of that dwelling." So they can go ahead and leave for the summer, but they cannot go and sublet it out and then let the subletter do the short-term rental, which then things quickly can spiral out of hand. So in the verbiage that Eric read tonight, was he covering owner occupied and the specifics or not, is my question?
Okay, so we don't have specific owner occupied. What we do have as part of the registration process is that it's proof of primary residence. We actually proposed owner occupied back, I think in a study session earlier, but it was discussed at that time as to allowing long-term renters to have the ability to have short-term rentals. But what we ask for, for proof of primary residence is registrants shall provide documentation that the property where the short-term rental activity is to be conducted is the host's primary residence. And so we are asking for that information. We're also asking for any host to provide their name, and any host is an adult, to provide their name, contact information, and identification. We're also asking, as part of this new first reading, official government identification so that we know who that person is and we have the ability that that's their primary residence, to kind of avoid any, you know, subletting happenings.
Can I ask then who will be responsible for the fines? The house, the one who lived there, or?
I can answer that. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Philip Wilkum, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. So generally, in all cases, the property owner and/or the host, if that person is different, are both jointly and severally responsible and could receive a citation for any violations that happen as part of either STR activity or a violation on the property as a whole.
So you mean you can make two citations, one each for the same violation?
Yes, that's correct.
That's good to know, because, yeah.
So if I kind of jump back in, it took me a minute to kind of digest what Eric said. Well, that's what I think we came up with, or I'm not sure we came up with it, but that's, that's about what we took as the way it was going to be. I think my preference, you know, kind of like what we said about the enforcement and going middle ground, I would be inclined for the short-term rental activity has to be done by the owner that occupies, and the owner must occupy it, as opposed to, you know, the owner letting a longer-term renter be the administrator of the short-term rental, which that puts the concern one step back from where it should be. The short, the property owner is going to be, should be concerned about his neighbors. He should be concerned about the treatment of his house. A renter is not going to be concerned about the neighbors, at least not to the same degree, nor concerned about the condition of the house. You know, small party versus big party with alcohol, things of that nature. His motive is going to be capitalizing on his income so that he can then pay the owner for his rent. And so I see that additional, you know, step away from the owner as being one that can lead to what we experience. And so I'd rather not go down that path at this point in time. Say that the owner has to be the one doing the short-term rental activity, and he must occupy the resident, although he can leave for maybe up to six months at a time if he's going to Europe, you know, for a job, contract job of some type, whatever that case may be. But that's the verbiage that I would be tending to want if I have enough support, that, you know, maybe Councilman Paul can characterize that correct with the correct wording. But that's pretty much my biggest concern. Parking's a concern, but to a much lesser degree, so.
All right, thank you, John.
So how do we prove that the primary residence, would that relieve John's concern?
When we ask for the government-issued ID, it'll have a rest, it'll have an address on there.
Well, that's not quite where I was at. You know, a renter, a renter, whether it's six months or three years or five years, they're not going to have the concern as the property owner would have. So, again, I would be the, you know, preferring that the owner is going to be the one administering the short-term renter, rental, so that he's going to be more careful and he's going to manage things a whole lot better than the renter.
I'm thinking it could be, if they can both be fined, then that means this primary resident, the person who lives there will be accountable to whatever happened. I'm concerned about this situation. For example, someone rent or let their child live in the house. That's their primary residence, and they don't really own it. But then they do have extra rooms and rent it out as short-term rental. Then that should still be allowed to, right? So I remember last time there was a really nice comparison chart.
Yeah, it's included as an attachment to the agenda.
The comparison with what other cities did.
Yeah, I can potentially bring that up. Give me one sec.
Most other cities don't have the ownership requirement.
Yeah, most cities do.
One or two.
Most cities do or don't?
Do allow renters. They're not specifically.
Do allow. Most cities allow renters. Don't require owner occupied.
Remember when we did the first reading of the first one, one of the biggest changes was going from, you, staff could, you should correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the changes was going from a business license requirement to a permit. So you're just, you're permitting it, an STR in the new one versus the way it happens now. And that actually strengthens our whole position. You're permitting, otherwise excluding unless permitted. So to me, that gives us way more of the control that council is looking for and that we should have over STRs.
That's correct, if I can echo that. It certainly does bring the leverage back to the city to enforce it, certainly more so than we currently have.
I remember last time I spent a lot of time reading, had some comments, and I were told, "We need to pass it now," how the comments for future. Did anyone make notes of the comments from the council? Did we include any of those in this new version?
In this version, I don't believe we did. We just, we brought back just minor tweaks to kind of help with the current enforcement.
You didn't view that comments were there in the council made, maybe we can reconsider.
Well, I think if this particular proposed STR, what I would do is it's, you know, there was some urgency on council's part to get this together.
Yeah, I know, last time was urgency, so we didn't spend time to discuss the additional objects. Now it's another urgency.
Yeah, now we should have taken notes.
I think next time we should have taken notes. Okay, we need to go through, but here are what's raised. And then next time, we can start from where we were last time, and then maybe go through the list, find out, okay, is there some things we can include? Then that's faster. Now I cannot go back to remember. But I remember one thing that some other cities did was they set a limit. For example, it's a two-bedroom, right? So you can have up to four people sleep overnight, but then they can invite twenty people as overnight guests.
I think ours.
Other cities, or even during, or even guests during the day, or guests like before ten o'clock, some cities have a limit that they can have at most twice as many guests, daytime guests. So that's something we might consider if we concerned about overly big parties. I don't know what people think about that.
And I realize, I realize.
I realize we don't want to over-regulate, so.
Well, and also, we don't want to overreact because we have one kind of issue at the moment. We've learned a lot from it, don't get me wrong. So we have tried, staff and I have tried to put that in, with those learned lessons learned in. And I do feel that the STR as it stands, the new one, is much stronger position than where we are currently. So we can make tweaks maybe later if something's not working, but I would.
And based on your concern, I do want to say that it's only one, one city does that. I think it might be Los Catis. And we did discuss it, but there was some concerns about the rights to gather and certain things like that, and so it would be, it would need further legal review.
That's fine. So then I remember that we talked about in case someone called the sheriff to the rent, to the house, is there, do we have anything that requires the contact person to send over the list of residences, their license plate numbers, to the sheriff or the city, like Philip, right away, so that when the city staff is at the house or the sheriff is at the house, we know exactly who are supposed to be there?
We do require the local contact, and our local contact would have that information available. Like, they would know who was staying at the.
I remember they need to respond within one hour. Do we require that when they respond, they should have all the information, right?
I'm trying to see what we say. They would have that information available. We can look into adding that to be more clear, but.
Yeah, they need to provide this information within the hour when they respond.
Of the occupants is your point, right?
The occupants, the license plate number they registered, right?
And I would say that that would be something we could bring back as an amendment later, but upon further legal review.
It could be an administrative thing that they can implement. And then another thing is in terms of the fees, are we charging the same fee whether someone rents out one, two rooms, or three rooms?
Yeah.
Then that makes it kind of more expensive if someone were to rent out just one room, right? At most two. I think our ordinance is at most two, right? At least two contracts, as I remember.
If I may, this is P. We can, when we bring the fee back, look to see if, you know, the council indicates an interest in looking at a sliding scale fee, we can look at that and potentially bring that back. But we're looking forward to your input on what your direction is on those fees.
Oh, so is it, as I remember, it was at most two contracts? But one contract can have three rooms, right?
Yes, one contract can have as many, it could be the whole house, too.
It could be the whole house. So their income might vary a lot.
Right, it's one listing, essentially. So you can't have multiple people, like multiple guests, like different parties. It'd be all one party, like one room, or all the house, or something like that.
And then if someone is, only does short-term rental, say, two months out of the year versus someone who does twelve months out of the year, right now we are charging the same flat fee.
Correct. It's not related to the amount of time that they rent out the businesses, the rooms for.
Okay.
You don't want to be too different than other cities on this one.
Yeah, so maybe next time we can see what other cities do. We don't want that to be too penal.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
We can certainly bring that information.
Only one room. Yeah. Okay. That's all.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
Okay.
Okay, so, Darcy, you made the motion, so are we ready to vote now?
I am.
Okay, let's do it.
Oh, just, oh, go ahead, Kirsten.
I was just going to ask if the vice mayor wishes to include finding the proposed actions exempt from SEQA in his motion?
I had assumed that that was part of the motion, because that was part of the.
And the secondary confirms.
Let me take a look, because there are other items, too, if you're talking about. Yes, the other portion was amending the municipal code by adding five dot O eight, three dot twelve, amending that, and Chapter nineteen point O eight, Chapter nineteen point twelve, and Chapter nineteen point one four. But that seems to have been part of your first reading. So yes, I'll go ahead and add that portion to the motion, finding the proposed actions exempt from SEQA. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead.
Second?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're on to item fifteen, approve the Second Amendment to Employment Agreement for City Manager Related Budget Modifications and Revised Appointed Employee Compensation Program. Staff report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. The City Council completed the City Manager's Annual Performance Evaluation, and the Second Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Contract before you this evening recommends the following based on council direction. Increase base pay to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually. Decrease auto allowance to three hundred and fifty dollars a month. Provides a one-time pay. auto allowance to $350 a month; provides a one-time payment into deferred compensation of $15,000 to be paid in biweekly installments; and all changes are retroactive to June 3, 2020. Available should you have any questions. And that concludes the report.
Okay. There's no attendees to speak on this, so bring it back to council for discussion. Hopefully, there's no more discussions since we discussed this extensively already. Does anyone have anything? If not, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 20-112, approving the Second Amendment to Employment Agreement for the City Manager and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and approve the Budget Modification Number 2021-090, increasing general fund appropriations by $49,695 in fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Member Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item 16, designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates to vote at the annual business meeting, General Assembly, during the League of California Cities' Virtual Annual Conference, October 7th to 9th. Staff report.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, due to COVID-19 conditions and restrictions, the League's holding the in-person conference virtually this year. And part of the annual conference is the annual business meeting, which, at this meeting, the League membership considers and takes action on resolutions establishing League policy. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, council must designate a voting delegate, and council may also appoint up to two voting alternate delegates in case, in the event that designated voting delegate isn't able to serve in that capacity.
Great, okay. Well, I will nominate myself as a voting delegate, and I don't know who else is interested, if anyone, for the alternates. Darcy, will you be an alternate?
No, I'm kind of constrained schedule-wise right now.
Okay.
I'll second your self-nomination.
Okay. Leon, what about you, or Rod, or someone?
Is there only one primary delegate and you're intending
There's only one primary. Only one person can vote. If I couldn't attend the virtual meeting for some reason, then someone else.
Because you're, because the, because you can't travel or something.
Well, there's no traveling, right? Okay.
It's virtual.
It's virtual.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
I'll be your alternate.
Great, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that I be the voting delegate and Councilmember Chow be the alternate should I be unable to attend virtually.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're just going through these. Item 17, Authorization to amend the current agreement with Lifetime Tennis Incorporated, doing businesses' lifetime activities to adjust compensation accepted by the city due to the impacts of COVID-19 and sports center retrofit. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, do we, if we've all studied this item, can we forego the staff report? We have such a big item left.
It's fine with me.
I think we've all had an opportunity to be briefed and read this.
I can offer a very short summary if you'd like.
All right, very short.
Okay, so due to COVID, the Lifetime Tennis has lost approximately half of their revenue. At the current, in the current situation, revenue does not cover any of the city-specific expenses, so it's really just a loss of revenue for the city. So the proposal is for the last payment, this is where I'll need help from Joanne, for the last fiscal year, we are suggesting to council that we reduce their payment by $42,000 approximately, and for the current fiscal year, to take a flat 23% from all of their earnings monthly versus any kind of other compensation. And that was probably a win, we think, because it could have been as low as 16% or so. So it's definitely revenue-based, the amount that would be collected by the city. Did I get that right, Joanne?
Got it right.
Okay, I don't see any attendees that wish to speak on this. All right, so I'll bring it back to council. So I did have a question, Deb. I've gotten several complaints from residents recently about this company. Can you explain what happened, what's been happening with the use of the tennis courts?
Yes, so the first one was a tennis court use before 2 o'clock on Saturday or Sunday with the weekend days. And Lifetime Tennis officially does not have the right to use those before 2 o'clock on the weekend days, so we've adjusted staff's direction to the contractor. So that got fixed. And then there seemed to be, although I cannot confirm, some practice by perhaps a contract employee who would sign up for a court, for an available court, but use it for lifetime purposes. And of course, if that's true, we've ceased that practice as well.
Right, that was one of the complaints I got. Okay, let's see, anybody want to speak? Nobody wishes to speak on this. Any more discussion from council? Okay, well, is there a motion? I guess. Okay.
I'll move the staff report on recommendation.
Okay, I'll second it.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Wow, all right, very good. So now we can go back. Let's see, is it time for another break? It's been, we've been going four hours so far. Why don't we just take five and 10:53, we can start on the big item.